Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Monday, May 20th, 2018 City Council Meeting. Clerk, can you please call the roll. Alderman Santi, here. Alderman Glad, here. Alderman Schaefer, here. Alderwoman Baney, here. Alderman Mahavik, here. Alderman Devine, here. Alderwoman Miller, here. Mayor Jett, here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is a proclamation proclaiming June 12th, 2019 as William Pondell Day. It reads as follows: Whereas the City of McHenry recognizes the contributions of its noteworthy citizens who have made valuable contributions to the community, whereas William Pondell accomplished the highest honor in the Royal Ranger ministry, and whereas William Pondell was awarded the Gold Medal of Achievements as a member of the Royal Rangers outpost, number 279, and now therefore being proclaimed by the City of McHenry, Illinois, that June 12th, 2019 will be proclaimed as William Pondell Day. And be it further proclaimed, this proclamation shall be presented to William Pondell in the City Council chambers on this day, the 20th of May, 2019. Is William Pondell present? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is recognition of McHenry Police Officer Larry Pop and K-9 Officer Duke. Chief Burke, you have the floor.
The dogs are not here for this award. We have some items on the agenda from the Police Department, so they're just here for support. Mayor Jett and City Council, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to formally recognize Officer Pop and K-9 Officer Duke. Duke would like to be here today, but as I said before, he's adjusting to his retirement and home life, and we didn't really feel it would be appropriate to bring him in here, but we do have some other K-9 representation here on his behalf. Officer Larry Pop had the privilege of being selected as our K-9 officer in March of 2011. Upon his selection to this specialty position, he was paired with his new partner Duke in April of 2011, and after undergoing extensive training, Officer Pop and Duke hit the road in June of 2011. After more than eight years of service as a team, the McHenry Police Department has announced the retirement of Duke effective May 1st of this year. Being selected for a specialty position within the McHenry Police Department is an honor and a significant commitment on the part of any officer. The commitment made by Officer Pop and K-9 handler, as a K-9 handler, resulted in a long-term commitment that lasted years, requiring ongoing extra training and numerous call-outs. Perhaps the most significant commitment made was the commitment that Officer Pop's family made in support of Larry and his journey and welcoming Duke into their family. Tonight, we honor Larry and Duke with an official chief's commendation as our way of saying thank you for over eight years of service to the City of McHenry. Although you can't quite retire yet, Larry, we do wish Duke all the best in his retirement years, filling his new position as a family pet. Larry, can please step up? So I'll read this to you, Larry. This plaque is hereby awarded to Officer Lawrence Pop and K-9 Officer Duke in recognition of your eight years of service as the McHenry Police Department's official K-9 unit. During this time of service, both Officer Pop and K-9 Officer Duke conducted themselves in the highest professional manner as expected by the McHenry Police Department. Through the specialty skills unique to a K-9 team, you offered protection in times of need, aided in the locating of missing and wanted subjects, aided in the apprehension of offenders, assisted in locating items of evidence, and took countless amounts of illegal drugs off the streets of McHenry. The McHenry Police Department hereby thanks you for your devoted service to the City of McHenry and the residents and the citizens we serve, presented this 20th day, May 2019. Congratulations, Larry.
Easy, easy. Real quick, thank you, Mayor and City Council for taking a moment to recognize the people. Thanks, guys, for coming, K-9 handlers. Dave, Danielle, from Buffalo Grove. Danielle, can you raise your hand? I could not put a name or a face for the kind of guys that don't know her. Just want to say thank you real quick to a couple people, Chief, Deputy Chief Commanders, thank you very much for doing this, and then my wife and kids. You guys have been really supportive. I know Duke's struggling right now at home. We'll get through it, but I appreciate it. Olivia, you've done a lot for Duke, feeding him and watering him. As officers, we miss a lot of stuff, family functions, weddings, and Lisa, my wife, I appreciate you for being supportive. I know we've had some arguments because I wouldn't leave because Commander Funk's right on the street time's unit and I want to be available. So, you know, I missed a lot of functions for that because he was my boss. Officers were on that topic. Commander Funk were only here because he did not shoot my dog the one day, so I appreciate that for trusting my recall ability with the dog. But in general, guys, thank you very much. It's been great. I never thought this day would come. I wish it would never came, but it's, you know, time to move on, and I appreciate it. For all you guys that are K-9 handlers, suck it up and enjoy it because it's going to go fast. So, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
If you'd like to stay, you guys can, but you're not required.
Prater, why were you the first one to stand up? Y'all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. It's good to know no one brought any illegal stuff on them tonight. That's a good sign. So moving on to the agenda here. Public comment. Is there any members in the public that would like to address the council at this time? See none. Moving on to the consent agenda, items 7A through 7H. Is there any council members wanting to pull any items for separate consideration? See none. I'm looking for a motion to approve items 7A through 7H on the consent agenda. Alderman Schaefer?
Salute.
Second. Alderman Santi?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion on these items? Clerk, please call the roll. Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 8A for individual action items. Discussion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 14, Section 14-36, alcoholic beverages and Chapter 4 alcoholic liquor to allow for the creation of a bring-your-own alcohol liquor license. This item is being brought to you for the main purpose of having control and regulation of alcohol, being brought to businesses in the community, and I'll go ahead and pass it over to Chief Burke. I pretty much just said something.
I think you did a good job.
Was that good? That was like my first time, so.
Well, we brought this forward for consideration for an amendment to our offenses ordinance and to our alcoholic liquor ordinance to allow the creation and enforcement of a bring-your-own alcohol liquor license. And we're present to answer any questions that the council may have.
Open up for discussion by council.
Alderman Santi? Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand this type of liquor license. It's not a full liquor license where, since it's not a pour, they, there's no option to receive any kind of gaming license because of this type of liquor license. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, the only thing is, again, this will be controlled just like all the other liquor licenses. There will only be so many available, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, there would be two as it stands right now if the other items on the agenda were to pass. It would be the Pedal and Pour in their current art studio on Pearl Street, which is we're grandfathered in just because we've worked with them and allowed it because they were the only establishment that was doing it in the past. We didn't have an enforcement ordinance on the books to say no to it, but we do want to make sure that we have the ability to regulate it as this topic is growing in other communities as well.
Right, we just want to make sure it doesn't get out of hand.
Correct.
So basically, what's, the motion is basically to allow for the creation, and it doesn't really get created until we approve down the road.
Now, the bring-your-own license, as you can see in here, the issuance of a bring-your-own license is issued on the authority of the liquor commissioner. It's much like a special event permit because it's not a traditional liquor license as far as pouring or serving, so it's not something that's brought back. It's applied for and approved at the liquor commissioner level.
The only thing I tend to wonder is, okay, bring-your-own alcohol liquor license, all right, but like with the parks or whatever, somebody brings that in as long as?
It's designed for a business. So it's designed, yeah, specifically designed for a business in town that's not in the business of selling, pouring, or serving alcohol, or in the restaurant business with an existing alcohol license to allow people to bring in and consume alcohol while they're also concerning whatever product that business is selling.
Okay, so it won't affect any of the others?
Correct.
It's all okay.
Thank you. Alderwoman Baney?
Does this prevent other businesses from making this request? I know it only said two were being allowed at this time. Would we change that if someone else made a request to council?
It does not prevent others from making requests. The way the alcohol liquor ordinance is written is that once a different, whether or not it's a liquor license that's approved at city council level and the mayor or just the mayor, the ordinance is written that it provides the city clerk automatic authority to change that number provided one is approved. So if the third one was applied for and approved, it would automatically change the set number to three. If somebody gave one up, it would automatically, you automatically give the deputy clerk or the city clerk to reduce it to two. That's how we wrote the ordinance years, well, a long time ago. That's how we regulated beginning of 2019.
Yeah. Yeah. To the city attorney, David, I guess your comments on this as far as the fact that it does come to council to raise or lower the amount of licenses available, is that as solid as the way we've handled the other liquor licenses?
Solid.
As far as being able to deny?
Yeah, so long as the city clerk reduces the number by virtue of a denied license or a revoked license or a canceled license, we're good. Because we have, what you're referring to is a separate ordinance that's not in front of you that exists that we previously granted, right?
It's within the alcohol liquor ordinance. It used to say, upon approval by city council for an increase in liquor licenses, the city clerk is hereby automatically directed to amend this section to change the number that's authorized. This particular amendment for tonight says, upon approval for city council of an increase in any Class A, B, or C license and/or by the mayor for any Class E license, which is this new license, the city clerk is hereby automatically authorized to amend either increase the level based on an approval or decrease the level based on revocation or cancellation. And then most.
So it just kind of streamlines the process a little bit?
Which is, that was the change I think we made in 2000, it was last year.
We delegated that authority to her.
Correct.
Because it became such a nuisance to come before the city council. It was coming quite often to just reduce or increase the number, so with Marcy, we just delegated it to her at the time. It was during Marcy's term, actually.
In other words, when a business closes, it automatically shuts down. We don't have to wait till a council comes.
If they actually close, except for the exception we put in here for a seasonal business, much like the one you're going to be considering shortly, if they stop business for 30 days, they automatically forfeit their right for the liquor license based on ordinance down. So any current liquor license older in town, if they close for 30 days or more, they forfeit that liquor license.
Right, but as soon as it's forfeited, then it's reduced.
It's reduced, and they would have to come back.
You don't have to wait for council approval to reduce.
Yeah, for an A, B, or C, they'd have to come back to you again and get permission and re-act it.
I kind of like that idea because of the fact that it locks it in a lot quicker and a lot better for us. Thank you.
Alderman Schaefer?
Just to go on something you just said, Chief, for this one, the, I don't have a problem with the mayor only approving it, but I would like to have it, I think, coming by council, at least on the consent agenda thing, so it's made public. Is that? Because then you just say this Class E one can just be approved by the mayor with no council?
Much like a special event liquor license, yes, that's how it was designed.
Yeah, I just want to, I mean, I just want to have it be made public record that this license was issued. So don't we, do we, don't we do that today through consent agenda? Or is that just, it just goes out from an approval from the mayor? You know what I'm saying? I don't want it to not be public.
I think we could put it as an item of notice on any agenda item, the following agenda, anytime one was issued that following agenda. I don't know if it would go under consent, David, or would it go under just notifications or?
Discussion.
Yeah, not even discussions, but.
Because we don't, you don't approve special use things without going, or be invisible to the council, do you? I don't think so.
No, but I would like to see that.
We need a report.
So, for clarification, special event licenses are issued by the mayor solely, without going to council, and that was changed.
I just was trying to.
Did we just change that?
Year and a half ago.
Put it so that on a liquor license like this, even though it's approved, how it can be made so it's public?
The mayor report would probably be the appropriate.
I was just going to say, yeah, as part of this, what we can do is, I mean, through this discussion or as part of the motion, however it can be handled, we can just make sure that any of these that are issued are identified underneath of the mayor and city council report as part of this agenda. That way you know that a class, we'll just say Class E on this date, a Class E license issued to this business. We can do that.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Santi?
If, okay, just because we have potentially two coming in tonight, next year, when we normally formally vote on all liquor license categories, will this actually be attached to that document then? Would we have to put that category?
It is an annual renewal, so if there was a document submitted for an annual renewal, I don't see the harm in making sure that it's there for clarification.
Makes sense, right? Makes sense to you, David.
It's only a one-year license, so.
Yeah, so it's, that's, so it could be part of that list.
I see it that, right.
Oh, thank you.
But that makes it total confusion. It doesn't come to council for approval, but then to renew it for the annual, it has to come to council for an annual. That makes no sense. It should either be, it should either be that the mayor is, if the mayor is going to be allowed to just do the liquor license, then why does it come to council at all?
It doesn't need to. We just have to write it.
I don't.
If we write it that way.
I don't know if the alcohol ordinance requires any renewal to go to council as long as it's an existing license.
It always has traditionally now. If something has been changed in the wording and it doesn't come to council, then why do we get it every year to approve?
We just didn't deal with renewals on these BYOB. It's on Section 410.
I mean, considering every one of these city council members is a deputy, unless we've changed that, that we didn't realize we're all deputy commissioners. And what does that mean then?
There's no language in there that identifies any council member as a deputy commissioner, or was there, to my recollection, ever?
So somewhere it was dropped off the ordinances that were no longer?
Let me pull up the current.
It said 410, I think. Well, I don't like the wording of the renewal, so I won't read it to you. The bottom line is, you know, if you have a Class A liquor license, it's for one year. That's what the license itself is issued for one year. It's not issued beyond that. It has to come before the city council to be reissued.
Why?
Or it's going to expire.
But if it never came to the council, be issued?
No, no, I said a Class A.
Oh, Class A, great.
All other liquor licenses have to come here, so this one, unless we modify the ordinance that's in front of you to address renewal, it's going to come here. I understand what you're saying, that it's the mayor issued it, therefore he's the one who renews it, but it doesn't say that. It shouldn't say that.
Alderman?
Yeah, could I make some suggestion that we move forward with this because we do have businesses that will be affected by this, and we're expecting this. Not saying that we're just going to do something just because they expected it, but I don't have a major problem with it at this time if we bring it back to council to review later and iron it all out so that we have everything consistent. I just think that it needs to be that way.
So are you saying we would adopt it tonight and then amend it, or?
We can amend it. We can always amend it. So let's pass it tonight and then amend it if we feel it needs to be amended later. I think it's a solution to keep moving forward.
Any other questions, comments by council? I'm going to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to take a public comment regarding this item? See none. Looking for a motion and a second for item 8A as presented. Alderwoman Baney, second. Alderwoman Miller, discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the roll. Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 8B, discussion regarding amending the fiscal year 1920 budget, account 100 dot 22 dot 8300, and the amount of $27,109.88 for the purchase of a replacements police vehicle and related equipment, and the authorization to purchase one 2019 Ford Interceptor utility from Bus Ford, and the amount not to exceed $32,165, and the purchase and installation of vehicle equipment from Ultra Strobe Incorporated at the cost not to exceed $8,621.36. Chief, can you go ahead and present this item?
Thank you, Mayor. On February 10th, 2019, the McHenry Police Department had a marked patrol vehicle that was damaged beyond repair after being involved in a motor vehicle accident. With such, staff has worked to find a replacement vehicle, as this police patrol vehicle is a vital piece of equipment needed for us to provide services to the community. Staff is requesting city council authorization for a budget amendment and authorization for the purchase of a replacement police vehicle and the equipment there, and staff is present to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments? Alderman Glad?
Just as far as the state program, is this in line with the pricing of the state that normally have on a time vehicle?
This is. This is, so obviously, you know, in order to meet the guidelines of a bid process because of the dollar amount that we, we either have to go out for three competitive bids for the same significantly, same vehicle, or we have to associate ourselves with a current contract or bid process that has already been going through. So by utilizing, we own a joint state purchasing contract, which is, which meets the requirements of the bidding process, as long as we can secure it either through the named for dealership or through our local vendors, as long as they're willing to match that price, then we meet the requirements.
Okay, so that satisfies me?
Any other questions, comments? See none. Looking for a motion for item 8B as presented. Alderman Santi?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Second, about Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Comments? Clerk, please call the roll. Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 8C, motion is a discussion to approve a revocable license agreement between the City of McHenry and Pedal and Pour Incorporated. This item is being brought back to you before, bringing, being brought back before you in an agreement. I feel it's appropriate for both parties, but I'll open it up for discussion by council. Alderman Santi?
Just to make sure that, you know, it's public record, it's here, but this is for just one pedal bolt?
Right now.
Correct.
Right.
And if there's a second or anything, it'd be coming back to council?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions by council? Alderman Glad?
Another question, just a statement. I just feel a lot more at ease than I did at the last meeting because we have an agreement in front of us now and everything else. And our attorneys looked it over to assure us that everything is as tight as it can be to protect the city.
Any other comments, questions? No? Is there anyone from the public that'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none. Looking for a motion and a second for item 8C as presented. Alderman Santi?
I will make a motion to approve item 8C as presented.
Thank you. Second. Alderman Glad?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the roll. Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Tony, get that bolt water.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Look forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Come see us for your liquor license. I will. sooner than later.
Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding conditional use permit for an assembly use in variances for the property located at 4724 and 4716 West Crystal Lake Road, McHenry High School, West Campus. Derek?
That's me. I'm pulling triple duty tonight. Doug and I are out in ICSC, making pitches for the City of McHenry for a lot of new businesses. From their first day, I understand they're being pretty successful so far. We'll get a report from them when they get back. So this is an item that Doug would normally present. This is a conditional use permit request for assembly use for basically the property that West Campus High School is located on. The request before council has four items. As part of the, part of the request, first of all, conditional use for assembly use and three variances, a variance for maximum building height, one for the elimination of parking lot landscape items, and a variance to allow an additional accessory structure for assault dome. Overall, the applicants proposing to construct a 64,000 square foot addition in the existing West Campus site, and this project went before the Planning and Zoning Commission and was receiving unanimous approval through planning and zoning with those, with those variances and the conditional use. And in addition to the information that's provided in the city council packet, council received, I put a copy in front of you tonight, responses to some concerns that were brought up by not just a single, a single council member, but by various topics by other council members also. I think there were eight separate issues that staff forwarded to District 156 and their consultants, and there was a response provided by District 156 via their consultants, Goel Hamilton, that went through and addressed these issues from their stance. So in addition to the information in the packet, you have the letter in front of you that has some additional information. And with that, the consulting team from 156, on behalf of 156, is before council tonight to answer any specific questions that council may have regarding the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for discussion, comments, questions for Goel Hamilton too, and they can come up to the podium if you don't mind, state your name and address for public record, please.
I don't have too much else, but in case there's anything we need to point out.
Open up for questions, comments. Alderman Schaefer?
I had a couple of questions.
Thank you.
The salt dome structure, do you have any idea what that's going to look like? Do you want to describe it?
Sure. It's approximately 25 by 40, and it will have concrete bin walls around the perimeter, and it will be a fabric structure over the top. About, it'll be about 20 feet tall.
Is it like a dome then, or is it?
It's more of a, it's more of a gable type building. It's not a dome like a traditional salt dome. It's more like a gable. It's more of a, it's more of a gable type building. It's not a dome like a traditional salt dome. It's more like a gable.
And that's going next to the?
Next to the ground garage.
Okay. Uh, the other question I had is can you explain consultative maintenance?
Oh, the, we're talking about the outfall swale?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Tom Richly with Gable Hamilton. Thank you, uh, for having us here. Uh, the outfall swale involves both the detention basin and some of the outfall swale involves native plants, uh, which need a little more of a specialized maintenance, so it's a, it's a firm, a construction firm or a contract firm, uh, that will provide a couple bids to the school district and will quote to the school district to evaluate. Uh, but they would be the one to selectively clear the invasive species, uh, maintain the plants by reintroducing the, the designed species and then, um, otherwise maintain those. Other than, it's not just, uh, typical grasses that you would mow.
So it hasn't, that hasn't been done before?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, that's the only couple of questions I had right now. Listen for whatever we can say. Thanks.
Alderman Santi, just to follow up on that, so that's the drainage area?
Yes.
And, and by the, by the pond, so, so we're talking about everything that goes and starts heading, yeah, west?
Correct.
Yeah, the... The maintenance of that drainage area, I walked it myself on Friday. And, uh, if what you're proposing, it does seem to make sense where it's gonna be cleaned and then maintained 'cause it, it just doesn't come across as...
Correct.
...being maintained right now.
Correct.
At least usually to me.
No, you're right.
That's all I have right now.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah. We're talking about, uh, the entire drainage ditch all the way down, uh, with the agreement that the school and the city have. All the way down to, uh, the Feeder Street.
Would the, would, once it exits the school property, is there a, a s- association or subdivision that manages that swale? 'Cause it goes to turf grass, uh, as you get towards the cross street, the culvert. But I, I saw that comment today, I think, back from you. So my question back was, it's clear, clearly the school's responsibility to maintain it up until a point where it's, there's another, logically another someone else maintaining it, like mowing the turf grass, 'cause it goes from the native plants that are in here to sort of a turf grass swale with a concrete bottom. Is that cur- who currently maintains that?
The school's supposed to maintain everything all the way down to Kensington, I know according to the agreement, however.
Then that would, then that would continue. That's a...
The problem winds up is, uh, how do you address, uh, because that drainage ditch does run through some properties that do not have drainage adjustments where the drainage is running through.
That's a, it's a new one. I mean, if their agreement is currently with the city to maintain it to that culvert, then they would continue to honor that agreement.
The problem with that agreement is, is again... When I read the proposal, they say, uh, as far as, uh, the school property, but part of that drainage ditch is not on school property, so then who, who will maintain that? See, that becomes an issue, um... Because you could, you could take it, you could fix eighty-five percent of the drainage ditch, but if there's a spot here or there in the middle that doesn't get taken care of, it destroys everything else that you try to design.
A weak link in the chain.
And I just think to some extent we need to be proactive to where somewhere in the agreement that, uh, the city will either provide some kind of, uh, an agreement with the property owners or of some nature or something so that it would allow the, um... The school to be able to maintain what they promised to maintain.
So you're saying the school has an agreement to maintain property off-site?
Yeah, but they have, there... Several years back, there was an agreement between, uh, the city of McHenry and, um... Uh, the school, as far as the school to maintain the drainage ditch and it even expressly, uh, commented on the back of all the houses along Kensington and Silvery.
But that would have to involve those homeowners or the association or whoever is off-site 'cause the school district has no, and nor the city. Well, maybe the city does.
Well, the city doesn't really have any authority other than, uh, using eminent domain or whatever as far as cleaning up that part of the drainage ditch.
No, but I mean, if there was an agreement in the past, it had to involve that association or the homeowner, one of the two.
Well, the problem lined up is, is we did the agreement, but nobody ever really looked at it close enough to realize that some of that is not a drainage adjustment and therefore it, it puts the onus on the school. If they're gonna live up to the agreement that they have with the city, uh... How do they, how do they do that if they have to go on private property? And they can't go on private property without some kind of an agreement with the private, you know, with the property owner. My lot being one of them. But there is another one that, uh, the drainage adjustment is probably, uh, at least twelve to fifteen feet away from where the drainage ditch actually is. Because it's only the last ten feet of their property that has the drain adjustment. But yet, uh, and I've already shown the picture to, to Ross and a few others, uh, so they understand it. All I'm saying is, is we need to clear that up and clean it up so that we can make sure that what the intent is, is as far as, again, having the right type of planning in there, maintaining it. And again, I would hope that with what the school is looking to do, the main issue is, is, uh, because the drainage ditch carries water. I mean, you know, there's no, no doubt about that. It does clog up at times because of, unfortunately, uh, you get so much clutter in there that you don't see a homeowner that might throw some branches in there or whatever and then all of a sudden it starts damming up a little. The aesthetics of the entire drainage ditch becomes, becomes an issue. And as well as some of the weeds that are in there right now are, are slowly deteriorating the, uh, uh, basin of the, the drainage ditch and the sites. Actually, it's worse as you get on the other side into the private property area just before the, the, uh... Before the creek, but, but again, that's, that's another whole separate issue there, uh, because we're not even talking to that as far as the agreement. 'Cause the agreement only goes down to Kensington, uh, to the Feeder Street over there.
Okay, so we'll have all that agreement.
Yeah. So I think whatever we would approve tonight would have some language as far as the fact that, uh... That the city would work with them to get, uh... Approval from property owners, uh... To be able to maintain that.
No, that's too specific. We have to look at the agreement to see what issues remain and then deal with them, whatever they might be.
Okay.
It's just one.
Okay, so...
The school is taking care of, from what I'm understanding, from an engineering standpoint and a regulations standpoint and our ordinance is, you're good up to the border.
Correct.
It's...
They're up, they're good up to their border, but then... Does that negate the agreement? If we approved this tonight that way, does that negate the, the other agreement we have?
No, somebody's gonna, there's an enforcement problem here. That agreement should have been reviewed a while ago and corrected and enforced and it's not being enforced, obviously, if you have issues. So we have to look at it. It's, 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 to me, it's a separate issue. But I realize they're linked, don't get me wrong, but, uh, we don't know anything about that tonight. I don't know how we could link a condition to this without knowing what the issues are.
So issues is one of the, is?
If you have private property owners that...
Drainage ditch hasn't been maintained.
But if you have private, private property owners that are actually, we think, I mean, that could raise delays, enormous delays in trying to get that agreement to a point where it actually works.
Okay.
So we just have to take a look at that.
All right, so that...
And we will.
All right.
Well, I know. Okay.
The detention pond that we're talking about.
Sir?
Okay, uh, it is designed to be thirty-five percent larger every week.
Uh, probably nearly double the volume provided, uh, but we're meeting the requirements of the city of McHenry and the McHenry County Stormwater Ordinance.
Which will take that detention pond approximately somewhere maybe a hundred and twenty feet further west than where it is, is as far as it expanding out?
We're expanding it mostly south. Uh, its existing location is, is kind of tucked here and then we're extending it towards the JV socket field.
I'm sorry, towards where?
Towards the JV socket field to the south.
That's not the way this shows, uh, that I have here. It shows that it actually heads west.
Oh, going in here? Yeah.
Yes.
We're, uh, this is a, like a slope.
I mean, here's what I've got if you wanna take a fast look at it, but it, it shows where the existing is and where the proposed...
Yeah.
Addition is, I believe that's the sheet that you gave to planning and zoning.
Yep. As we're working on the design?
Uh-huh.
This is gonna be more, uh, cost-effective to go to the south. Going to the north and west, you're going into the hills, so you're creating a detention from where it was existing.
So you're gonna go northwest?
We're gonna go south as opposed, just to, just from a cost perspective.
Oh, you're gonna go south then?
Correct.
So what we had, uh, planning and zoning is being changed as far as the design?
From a, from a, yeah.
Okay.
Design group.
Do we have that? Is that in the packet? Was that changed, uh, than what, what went to planning and zoning?
Just in review by the engineer, uh, components from the city of McHenry.
'Cause one of my concerns is, is you show the drainage ditch, but you don't show the bunker that's all the way around it.
Show the bunker that's all the way around it?
Yeah. Drainage ditch is built up and there's a bunker all the way around it with the drainage ditch and, uh... What holds the water is minute compared to the entire pond. And what happens is that hill, which is as much as probably, it's gotta be at least eight feet high in some, some respects.
Okay.
Uh... That changes the direction of some of that water. Because as it's coming downhill, where it should be, uh, heading towards the drainage ditch, it's actually heading, it's buffered by that hill and so it, it winds up being redirected out that way. And my concern would be is, is if you are expanding the detention area, but of course you go in the other direction, how much more of that water is sent west before it, it's, it's sent south to the drainage ditch?
Uh, this is all highlands all the way across to the, the baseball field here. So your surface drainage is all directed here. Most of the water that's getting here is actually by storm sewer conveying the parking lots, north and south, by a pair of pipes that come into the basin here. Plus the water that comes in from the south, which comes in from Kensington and into it towards the south side of the parking lot, that's gonna be conveyed by open swale and a couple of small storm sewers to get it into this basin. So we're ending up with a collection, uh, for detention, a catchment, is the term, of a much larger area per, uh, portion of the McHenry West High School site.
The school's saying they don't have a, uh, natural spring out there, but, uh, they call it seepage.
Yeah, you're...
There's still water coming up through higher areas and that's where it's coming out.
The, uh, what you're, what you're looking at is some of those, uh, native plant areas where they would, they would continually collect water. Um, and mainly that's because of their low profile and the soils that we have here in McHenry.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But the problem winds up is, is that water sits, doesn't flow.
Right, and, and now, once we're done, 'cause most of that is centralized by this JV field and after the regrading, all that will have a chance to get here into the basin. So we'll focus all of that, uh, water in one location, provide the right plants that, that like that and a maintenance plan to keep those in place.
So we, now wait a minute, are you saying that you're going to ditch it to the detention pond?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, you think you could engineer it that way. I, and, and I guess my concern more than anything else is you can go out there, you can grade it and five years down the road, if nobody touches it, it winds up, uh, filling in and, and whatnot and then the water sits again and then we're right back to where we were.
Right, yeah.
In other words, what I'd like to make sure is, is whatever is designed, is designed so that, uh... Twenty years down the road, it's still to some extent, as long as there's some maintenance on it that, uh, you know, function the way it was supposed to.
Absolutely.
From the last one, and I know there, there were some mistakes made and everything else, uh, that you found, uh, or it, it appears that you found
Sure.
The mistakes of what was done, you know, years and years ago, um... Want to make sure that those corrections, again, uh... There's too many spots on that, that entire parcel that it wound up to be wet areas.
Right.
And that harbors mosquitoes. I mean, here we got our kids out, uh, playing in soccer fields and baseball diamonds and whatnot. And even the detention pond, uh, because of the fact that it, it doesn't dry out, it winds up to be better for, for mosquitoes. I mean, you know, what areas we got. I just wanna make sure that whatever is designed, it is designed so that it all dries out.
Absolutely.
Now... Another concern I have is because, uh, again, I'm the lowest area. I'm, I'm at the neck of the phone. Okay? I get your, your overspillings of water, uh, especially on very heavy rain events. And when I bought my house in ninety-one, I didn't have an issue. Two years later, when they put the modules in, who would've thought way up there on the, on the eastern edge that, that water was coming all the way down to me? They did the baseball fields, they leveled them off, they changed the direction of the water. Uh, they added in the, uh... The administration building, that became, uh, more drainage. And the problem is, is it doesn't sheet drain except in... If you look at the top, topos, basically, uh, the water heads northwest. However, because of the condos being higher up, it curtails it, so it just basically heads west and, and it curtails down around all of those condos and then it winds up by me. It actually winds up on the city little triangle that's over there. And then, of course, it can't go anywhere, so it goes to the least, uh, resistance, which is my backyard. And, uh, again, that, bad enough what I'm getting now, yeah, you could only convey so much on a heavier storm through those sewers. So where's that water gonna go exactly where, where it's going now and, and possibly more? And I just think the school really needs to look at something like that because they are impacting, uh, the property owner. Even if it's me, it's, I'm still one of the property owners that are, you know, adjacent to the school. Uh, well, almost adjacent to the school. So that, that's an issue with me personally. But I think it's something that, uh, the city should be looking at to make sure that, you know, that gets resolved. Another thing I've got is, is there's a tree at the bottom of the, the property just before it comes to the city property there. And I... It's a very low wet area. I've already seen one or two of the trunks of that tree rot away and, and actually fall. It's way up on the top.
Northwest.
Yeah.
We're down here.
You'll see, it, it's a, it was actually on the plan.
Okay.
It's, it's just before the city triangle there.
Got it, this way.
And, uh, I think, I think the, the school should look at removing that because of the fact that, uh, it, it's an old tree. Uh, but some of them flare out from the bottom. One, one or two of them over the years has rotted out and fallen. Kinda scared me about a week ago, uh, Saturday that, uh, it was actually a kid climbing it, uh, with two of them underneath the branch that was hanging way out. And I'm thinking to myself, you know, it's a disaster waiting to happen if, if that was fairly rotted away. And again, being so wet and moist at the base of that tree, uh... 'Cause it actually has a slight indentation and it meanders out to, uh, the drainage ditch. I just think the school should look at, if possibly remove that just for safety if nothing else. And, uh, probably it would help clean up that area as far as the swale that's over there too.
Yeah.
And again, it, it's a safety concern more than anything else. Another thing I've got is, uh... The tennis courts.
Okay.
Now, we moved the tennis courts, uh, to, I think, uh, what I said, red was twenty point three five feet from, uh, the corner of the tennis courts to the property lines?
Yes, right here.
It's awful close to the property. My concern is, is there's no buffering. You know, when they put in the parking lot, uh, seventeen and eighteen years ago, they, they built that hill up there, at least there was enough space over there to do it. There's nothing over there as far as twenty feet.
No, and actually that's part of your, uh, drainage system that'll, that'll convey that water between, you know, like I mentioned, there's water coming in from Kensington in this position here. So keeping this low, other than what's right at the property line for landscape upper, there'll be a swale that, that helps convey any floodwaters this way and out towards the creek.
Is there some way to put some nat- natural vegetation of some kind, uh, herbivites possibly or something?
Yeah, there's still be landscaping. It's, this point right here will, will come down to a, a gap in the landscaping, but other than that, from here back and from here over, plenty of... Yeah, there's still be landscaping, it's, this point right here will, will come down to a gap in the landscaping, but other than that, from here back and from here over, plenty of room for landscaping and elevation to do it.
I mean, the residents over here in Kensington know they're gonna lose the visual sight of the openness and everything else. There, not as much of a concern as that is, is the impact of the tennis court being so close.
Yeah.
That, you know, you're gonna hear all that all day long.
Yeah.
One of the things that I'm really happy to hear is that we're gonna replace the chillers over there. I don't know if you're gonna have more chillers than what you had before, but supposedly it's supposed to be a lot quieter than it is. So at five thirty in the morning, when I'm sitting out there and having my coffee and cigarette, and I don't hear a squeal going off at five thirty in the morning, that wakes the birds and everybody else up besides me. So I, I applaud you, the fact that they're looking at that, it'll help the whole neighborhood because, you know, you probably realize sound how directional is. We've learned a lot more with the gravel pit and everything else. You know, you could be two doors down and you don't hear hardly anything, and then another two doors down and all of a sudden you hear it again. And would be the furthest away as far as around the, the field, and I still hear it quite, quite clearly. So I'm glad to hear that. I think to some extent, yes, the onus is on the school as far as maintaining that drainage ditch, but I think we should really, as a city, look at what, what needs to be done in that drainage ditch. There's a lot of deterioration, a lot of meandering that's gone on, and I just think to some extent, the city should probably be evolved to some extent with that, that we're gonna have to maintain it. We just need to look at it, I mean, it's not something that's gonna happen overnight, just like the school isn't gonna be built overnight. But we need to have some kind of a game plan there that rather than saying, yeah, it's there and yeah, it's a problem. And then we go to the next year, we say the same thing. We really need to have a game plan and, you know, some kind of a timeline so that, that all gets taken care of. We want the school to maintain it, they're willing to maintain it, we, we need to help them out to make sure that it's, it's done and it's done right. You know, this is a, uh, a very complicated expansion of the school. I wasn't in favor of the referendum, but it passed and, and as long as it's going forward, let's make sure we can get it as, as stellar of a project as possible. So now we're gonna talk about traffic.
Could, could I just ask a question on that drainage thing for a minute?
I'm sorry?
Could I ask a question regarding drainage?
Absolutely.
That ditch that he just referenced, is that city maintained or school maintained?
That, that, reference the agreement is something that I'm not
Awesome. So there, there is an agreement, um, I actually have it here, cause I figured this was gonna get me brought up, and we, Oliver McGlav and I had gone over this. It references lots one through thirty-nine, which basically borders the west to south.
Could you point those lots out again for me?
Just from here?
Right, all the way, all the way up.
No, no, I'm talking about from there south.
Well, I can enter this into the exhibit if you wanna look at it.
Yeah, our focus of the study was all the school property, yeah.
Right, so Kensington Drive and Sussex, Silbury, I'm sorry, this is Silbury, this is Kensington. It's lots one, and they're numbered one through thirty-nine.
Okay.
So the agreement is with lots one through thirty-nine and the school district.
And who maintains it?
That the school is to maintain the drainage. There's a ten-foot easement with backs, that's on the backside of every one of those properties. And the school, within the agreement, is required to maintain that drainage easement.
Okay.
On those private properties. Now, the question, the question obviously that Oliver McGlav brought up was, does that, does that drainage physically encroach the amount of ten-foot easement that's dedicated? And part of this process and what we're gonna do this week, hopefully this week if the weather holds up, is go out and identify property lines and see where that easement actually lies and where that drainage, and that's part of this whole process that we're going through with the review and engineer and, and Jill Hamilton, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dave, so you know, uh, it runs through my property. Uh, my drainage easement goes this way, it's a ten-foot easement, and the drainage runs this way, and so there's like anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-eight feet that are, that's not an easement. And, and mine, I, I'm not worried about that, you know, we can always come up with some kind of agreement on that, but I wanna make sure the other property owners are, not that they're protected as much as city and the schools are protected, that they can legally do it with agreements or whatever.
For sure.
From the property owners.
Okay, thank you.
So it's, it's just some, something that we need to clean up, that's all.
Before you move on to transportation, I'm gonna go ahead, Oliver McGlav.
I'm gonna go a little different direction with the discussion. Um, first and foremost, thank you for your presentation. Um, I sat in on the planning and zoning when we made the recommendations to the city council. And I noticed that you do have the changes based on that conversation. We were very concerned about water, drainage, topography, and you've taken that into consideration, and I thank you. Um, just the work that you've already done with finding that the drain wasn't draining and working with the school district to at least get the system back in place is awesome. And I think as you're describing to me, the swales you're putting in, you are directing the water the right direction, which is nice. Uh, also having been in construction my whole life, I know that there'll be onsite changes as we start moving dirt around.
Yep.
Um, so I was very happy to see that the approval had periodic approvals by the city and subject to change. So that was good to see that what we're approving tonight is tonight, and if a change comes up, obviously it'll come up. So, um, I just wanted to change the direction and the tone for a moment, and thank you for doing the work and bringing us a design that's gonna work. So thank you.
Thank you. Oliver, same, tennis court, back to the tennis court for a second. It goes back to us for landscaping, correct? For, for around the tennis?
For the, um, you know, that's a dumb question, um, I believe, yes, I mean.
We have to
There was a landscape.
It's part of the original settlement, not here, but, yeah.
Correct, it ha- it has to follow all of our ordinances, obviously.
Sure.
Um, this is, is just stormwater.
Okay, yeah, because it is, it does get closer to the neighborhood and my just as a visual to get some type of, you know, screening like evergreens or whatever.
Absolutely.
Whatever, especially just on, on that south and west side, just those two corners right there. As long as you, you don't, but you don't wanna interfere with the drainage.
Absolutely.
I totally understand that, and that's, that's what I have at the tennis court, thank you.
Thank you.
Oliver McGlav?
Okay, we're still talking about the traffic though. The main topic was the traffic signalization of the light.
You probably remember my colleague. Can you say your name for public record, please, and your address?
Sure, Lynn Means with Luke Hamilton, six two five Forrest Street Drive in Bernadette's.
Thank you. Oliver McGlav, go ahead.
Yeah, um, the school is standing on the fact that they were, will be willing to, uh, put the traffic light in when it meets the criteria that's in the, uh, the IDOT manuals.
It's a federal manual, the MUTCD, which is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So IDOT, the Illinois State follows it as well as local municipalities, and it's a federal level on documentation.
Right, but it, it pretty much, IDOT's the one that approves putting that light in, correct?
The signal would be approved by the city since it is a city jurisdictional room.
The city would have to approve putting it in, but doesn't IDOT have something to say about it as far as their?
It would be a private signal on a city road, so it would not go through IDOT review unless it was going through, uh, um, a funding process where you would be looking to get state or federal funding for it.
All right, we're, you're talking funding, I'm looking at who ultimately approves when that traffic light can go in.
That, that would be the city.
So the city would approve it without warrants, it's still, they, they gotta do a tracking step.
Correct, that would need to be approv- it would need to meet those minimum guidelines.
Uh-huh.
Which are in the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD. And those volumes are based on the traffic volumes that are along Crystal Lake Avenue as well as the volumes on the side street. So it's a combination of those two volumes. As part of the warrants, it also considers, there's multiple warrants, they consider pedestrian volumes, crash history. So as part of our study, we look through those series of warrants, and they're not currently satisfied at this location. So we, at the South Access Drive, so we would not recommend installation since, um, there's issues that could be install, um, created by installing a signal that's not warranted. Um, could lead to additional, um, safety concerns, it could lead to additional crashes, and there's liability on the city, um, should something occur at a, at a location where a traffic signal is installed and it's not warranted. And so there's different mechanisms that that's why those warrants are in place, and the city follows those guidelines, um, for installation.
Well, I, I feel that IDOT has a lot to say about it. And I just feel that the city and the school should actually discuss it with IDOT, uh, IDOT's waiting.
IDOT, I, it's, um, not an IDOT.
Excuse me, I, okay, please. Uh, I've already contacted the other people that have talked to IDOT, and IDOT's waiting for the city and the school to get together and, and sit down with them to discuss the, the traffic light. Not saying they're gonna necessarily approve, but the fact that they would be willing to discuss it, uh, of the merits of putting it in. I mean, you realize that we're at two hundred and sixteen parking spots, we're gonna have, uh, well over seven hundred parking here, uh, spots just on that south side of the, the building. And, uh, that's one tremendous amount of traffic that's gonna go in and out of that, that parking area. We're not even talking the drop-offs. I mean, right now, it's such a mess as far as people trying to get in and out of there as it stands right now. You have parents that are parking on Kensington at two thirty, three o'clock in the afternoon to pick up their kids, cause they don't wanna deal with the mess that's there, getting people in and out of, out of the, that, that parking area. And even though you're talking about the interflow changing it, it's still getting it in and out on, on the, on the street.
So as we have established some discussions with city staff as well as the police department to evaluate alternatives, as you, as you recognize, there's two components, um, to the congestion. One, first and foremost, is Crystal Lake Avenue, um, this adjacent signals, um, the timings of them, um, the way that they're currently timed right now doesn't provide for optimal progression along Crystal Lake Avenue. The second element is relative to, as you mentioned, right now, that south lot access has parents coming in for drop-off and pickup, it has student parking. And just those combinations of those two, as well as overflow staff parking. And the combination of that does create congestion as well as the stacking being insufficient that there isn't enough for those drop-offs to be contained on site. So we have worked and continued to work to develop alternatives, um, looking for ways to direct flow to provide greater separation amongst those users, so that way all of the parents, um, drop off and pickup would not be, occur at the same location that, um, the student parking occurs at. And we're looking for alternative mechanisms to, um, provide a different egress for the, um, traffic to come out for those parent drop-offs. So with the separation of them, the volumes of exiting would be reduced. Um, also part of the, the, um, programming and for that parking, the parking is being designed for the capacity of the school. So the capacity of the school is at two thousand students. Currently looking at the, um, attendance of sophomores through seniors at the west campus, as well as the east campus sophomores through seniors. Combining those two is at seventeen hundred, about just over seventeen hundred students. So we are not adding currently up to the maximum, but the parking lot is being designed to accommodate the maximum increase that could occur at, um, up to two thousand capacity of students. Um, looking at historical growth and or in this case, the student population has relaned over the last ten years relatively stagnant, if not decreased. So we projected out very conservatively to a ten-year design horizon that assumed, um, relative growth along Crystal Lake Avenue as well as a two thousand student population. But realistically, based on information we have, we don't see that happening in the next ten years. So that's why we would consider, and, um, as the school's district had also committed to, that it be monitored to determine with these additional configurations, to determine if and when a signal is warranted. Then they, they concur, and they have stated that they concur that if a signal is warranted, then it should be installed. But right now, it doesn't satisfy that, nor do we believe that it would satisfy that in the near future.
But, but your alternatives are to, uh, we're going to change the, uh, the timing on the Dartmoor and, uh, and the Royal time, times on the, on the lights to keep a bigger flow on Crystal Lake Road. Problem winds up is, is, and I was the one that pushed that, that light at Dartmoor in the first place, uh, more so than anybody else because of the fact that my ward and, uh, the residents on Dartmoor were having a hard time getting out of their, uh, their driveways. Uh, they'd be two, two or three houses away from Crystal Lake and they'd go the other direction because they could at least get out and make a right off of their driveways to, uh, get out of the subdivision. They couldn't get out on, on the Crystal Lake Road there because the cars were so badly stacked up. And I don't wanna see that, where we wind up with traffic starting to stack up on, on Dartmoor again.
Sure.
Those lights, I mean, you gotta remember that the biggest impact, uh, that the school has of influx of kids coming in is seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning. And that's the time a lot of people are waiting for work. And, uh, so you've got a lot more traffic on Crystal Lake Road, and what's gonna happen? Sooner or later, IDOT is gonna step into Route thirty-one and start working on expansion over there, and when that happens, traditionally, people look for a different way when there's construction and they'll be hitting Crystal Lake Road, which is gonna impact that a lot.
And then the downturn, or I guess the positiveness, when the construction is complete, the Crystal Lake Avenue traffic volumes are projected to significantly decrease. So, um, that's, and there's no programming right now for IDOT to re-obtain traffic projections along Crystal Lake Avenue, um, for, with and without Illinois Route thirty-one expansion to occur. And currently, right now, there's no, um, programming or funding, um, in the near fi- in the five-year plan, which is what IDOT, um, has, has appropriated. And there's nothing right now for that expansion. Um, but if and when it were to occur, um, there might be a short-term flex, um, but the, the long-term would be, depending on where, if and when there would need to be any detouring and or if there was, um, construction traffic. But the long-term result would be a decrease in traffic volumes on Crystal Lake, at Crystal Lake Road as a result of the improvements still in Route thirty-one.
Are you talking about possible other ingress egress for the school?
We are working with the city and police to determine if there's a feasibility of creating additional, um, egress.
Okay, so what you're saying is, is we should approve the conditional, or the expansion of a conditional use now without all the plans in place? So the city council then loses control of the ingress egress to where that's just basically gonna be decided by staff and not by the city councils? I mean, we, hi, hi. Could somebody, yeah?
Well, the conditional, there's nothing that's being voted on tonight in regards to the parking. You're voting on a conditional use for the assembly use, the height of the building, eliminate the landscape islands, islands, and to allow an additional accessory structure.
Well, we are, uh, approving the conditional use, the expansion of the conditional use as the whole, as the whole project.
Right, so the project will go through the normal approval processes through the engineering firms.
Where are we as part of the ingress and egress changes? That's, I guess, my biggest point.
If I could clarify that, the, the ingress, we're not actually proposing any new driveways, remodeling of the north driveway, just to facilitate how the new parking lot's gonna shape. And we're looking at a connection between that and the long bus lane that runs along the east, southeast side of the buildings. When we talk about a change in potential ingress or egress, we're talking about operational directions so that the parents utilize this configuration as opposed to this to maintain that separation that Lynn talked about, so the students would stay all here, the parents would stay all here, the buses would make their loop as they currently do. So if I
The buses will only be using that, that lane because that was the agreement from years back, that that would just to be a bus lane only.
That, that, that plan has not changed, the buses aren't looking to change, but by utilizing the parents here and the students here But by utilizing the parents here and the students here, we've separated that, the two sort of conflicting elements that happen when you have parents coming in and trying to get out, or students are trying to get in, or vice versa on the way out the door.
See, I, this isn't the first time that we've had a condition, expansion of a conditional use brought to the council. Even District 15 had brought, brought some in. And at least there were good plans of everything that was going to be done. And this is just kind of, well, this is part of what they've got, and they don't really have all the plans in place. And that concerns me. Because what we're approving tonight is only half of the plan. We're not going to have the entire plan to see exactly how it's supposed to come out. If we're going to do the expansion of the complete conditional use, you would expect to know what the end results are going to be. And you really don't have it here. All we know is, yeah, we know where the building's going to go, we know the height's going to be different, we know there's some variances. But all the issues haven't been ironed out yet as far as how they're going to totally redesign the whole thing. We're peace feeling. And then, once we've approved it here tonight, if it's approved tonight, then it doesn't come back to council unless there's a variance or something.
So Troy, can I get you to help us out a little bit on the warrant, the warrants itself and the IDOT approval if it's warranted? And then also the fact of if it's warranted later in the future, who's on the hook for that? And obviously, we want to make sure we cover our bases that we're not on the hook for that, whether it's a letter or credit of some sort to make sure if it is, does become warranted.
All right, what, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the school district has expressed some willingness to pay for the signal in the case that it meets the warrant in the future?
Correct.
Okay. So I've read excerpts of the report. Right now, it does not meet the warrant. I believe in the future, there's a possibility that it could meet the warrant in more of a peak hour sort of count?
Correct.
Okay. So I don't know specifically how much oversight IDOT has on the go or no go for a signal if we're talking about building it in, I guess, in violation or against the standard warrants of the MUTCD. We would have to follow up and find out from IDOT. But there is some level of oversight that IDOT has on this route because it's a federally route. So if we were to build through any sort of federally, there would certainly be oversight that IDOT has on the go or no go decision for a signal. As far as us funding it on our own, I'd have to follow up further. But if we went on our own without the warrant being met, we'd be doing just that, we'd be building a signal against the standard that is set in the MUTCD. Thank you.
So if the school district agrees to install the light in the future if warrants are met, how is the debt agreement evidenced? Are we writing an agreement or is it, where is that documented?
Something that probably the superintendent would have to-
I would guess some type of an agreement would have to-
With an agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so that would be like a condition tonight that we execute an agreement relating to that traffic light?
Following presuma intergovernmental agreement program?
Right.
Yeah.
But again, that agreement would say, state what they're due.
Well, we don't know because we haven't written it, but the school apparently has taken, has accepted the obligation to pay the cost of installing the light when warrants are met. So we have to put that in writing?
Where does that say that?
We haven't written it.
We haven't written it.
All right, I'm writing it now as a condition.
Okay, as a condition. What I'm going at is, does it, that meets warrants or that approval of IDOT? I would rather see it approval of IDOT.
IDOT's not going to approve without warrants, right?
Ah, they may have different criterias, I don't know.
I, I don't-
I can tell you, excuse me, just one second. I've had our state senator talk to IDOT. IDOT would be happy to sit down with the city and the school to discuss the traffic light. They know the situation. And nobody's talked to anybody other than the manual. So maybe if we were to talk to IDOT, maybe we would get a little bit more specifics and know exactly where we stand with that. In the, the criteria that the school sent us is that if it meets warrants, they would be willing to, I think if I remember right, as far as worked with the city, as far as the curb cuts and stuff, there's nothing in there that specifically states that they would pay for the traffic light. And I think that's an issue. You know, I, I think it needs to be ironed out, specifics. So that, again, Mayor, you just said yourself that you feel that this school's responsible to pay for that light when it needs to go up. And we need to have that in the agreement that, so it specifically states that they will be paying for whatever grant monies or whatever. And we can help them to try to get grant monies if possible. But I'd like to see it so that it's specific.
I got it, I got it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just want to add another comment. Again, having seen your presentation before, I know we had a great conversation about traffic. And one of the concerns we brought up in planning and zoning was that we didn't want to see additional traffic pushed out Oakwood because that obviously drops into a residential area. So thank you for keeping that in mind as you're building the racetrack around the school that we're using Crystal Lake Road, although I wish it were somewhere else as our main entry and exit points. Because I don't want to see any additional traffic thrown out on Oakwood and then they having to go down to Meadow to catch a light. Because that takes you all the way through Whispering Oaks. So thank you for keeping it on Crystal Lake, we'll deal with it. And I know the school district had committed to monitoring the traffic and redoing studies if necessary, if it became more of a nuisance. And I think that really is what Alderman Glad is talking about, is the nuisance of getting on and off. You know, it's periodic in the morning, it's periodic in the night, it's a nuisance, and it may need a traffic control. I'm just grateful that we didn't say, oh, let's just push them out on Oakwood. That would be very bad.
Thank you, Alderman. I said, thank you.
You're welcome. I, that's important for everybody.
Any other questions, any council members, comments? Alderman Schaefer?
Just for clarification too on that, the bus routes when they go, the buses when they do leave, they have access to go through the subdivision, correct?
Just here, right, and then out, this is Royal?
So they're not, they're, I believe today they are going through the subdivision. Are you saying they only go to the right?
No. They keep going.
I believe the buses can.
I, that's one thing we should clarify too, because I don't know if that was how it was originally planned either. I thought they were all supposed to go to the light, but I know they don't all go to the light.
Yeah, I, I've only been here two years, I don't want to overspeak, but I believe that they've been able to go left and work right.
I don't, is that something that you-
Just for the record from our study when we did perform the counts, all the buses did turn right when we did count that intersection.
Okay, but I, I'm saying I don't think they all turn right.
One of the biggest problems winds up, and I saw this when it was first approved to put that through it, and District 156, of course, pushed the fact of the safety of the buses to get out there. So they, they make the right, and then a lot of them make the left, and they go down to Chesterfield, and then they go down to Oakwood. And instead of going down Meadow to the traffic light, they go left and then they take the border to Beach, and then they try to make the left on the 120. So, you know, it's like a double standard, you know? I mean, they needed that, that egress to get out safely, but yet then they use it somewhere else.
Yeah, I, I guess to continue, I don't have a problem with them doing that, I just want the, I mean, obviously, when someone's standing there watching, they're probably going to follow the rules. So if that's how you're doing your traffic count, that's very visible to a driver, so.
The traffic counts are done via camera.
Okay.
So they're all video, video recorded, so there wasn't a physical-
Well, that's, I mean, if that's-
Yeah, a human-
If that's the case, then I, I don't know if the chief has any information on that. But again, if the bus is going to that area, you know, out to Lakeland Park, it doesn't, for me, it may make sense to go through that area anyway, so. It just, I just, I'm almost positive they don't all turn right, that's my understanding, so.
Any other questions, comments? Nothing?
I did have one thing that I think should be, it's not said in this, but I, and I know we've done this before on some of the uses, but, I mean, if there, if there's residents that have drainage issues, that have noise issues, that have lighting issues, that have traffic issues, and those things come to us, that should be discussed or handled or gotten back to them within 48 hours. I mean, I don't know if that has to be expressly written in something like this, but I think that has to be, that, that's something that should just normally happen. And it's not just issues that come to the city, but if they come to the school, we have to be communicated on that too. I mean, if this drainage ditch for years has never been maintained, that's, that's something that if it affects the, you know, the water affects somebody else down the line, that's something that needs to be communicated and not just come up every 10 years when there's something that's going to be reviewed like this. I just think that's absurd that it's not been done that way. That's all I had.
Any other questions? All right, so Ryan McTagg is here, Superintendent for District 156. We kind of just fill you in a little bit. There's been, as far as the light, if it, if it meets warrants down the road, then we would have an agreement that would be funded by District 156?
Yeah.
Agreed? And then the other item, he's over here writing this stuff many times, I might have read it to you, I don't know what he's writing.
So the proposed motion would be as written on the agenda to permit the conditional use for assembly uses and the variations and so forth, subject to two conditions, from what I hear. The first condition is the condition of the execution of an intergovernmental agreement regarding the timing of the installation and the payment of costs associated with the future traffic light along Crystal Lake Avenue. And number two, within that same timeframe, so if it takes to the next city council meeting or a month from now to get that intergovernmental agreement, by that timeframe, the next condition would be confirmation to the satisfaction of the city council of the adequacy of the storm drainage easement to the west along Kensington going northwest there, or-
Lots 1 through 39.
Yeah, lots 1 through 39. And I think all we're looking for is by that timeframe, which we should be able to do, we read the agreement, we make sure that the easements are adequate enough from a width standpoint, and if there's other requirements that have to be met, we'll have to deal with it at the next meeting. But by that next meeting, that determination should be made with the recommendation, and then we'll be ready with the IGA at the same time. So if those are the only two conditions, that's how I would suggest the motion, which we'll read, and I'll read it again, I just wanted to see if everybody agrees.
Everyone agree with that in council?
No. I thought we were going to do it to where it was approval of IDOT, not necessarily warrants.
Well, I didn't write it yet.
I'm sorry?
I'm not putting it all in the motion, we, we-
We got to come up with that agreement.
Right. That will be in the agreement.
That would be in the agreement.
The agreement will come back to you.
That's that, that part of the, okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, the agreement's going to come back to you.
All right.
So we're approving the condition, the, we would be approving the-
Expansion of the conditional use.
The expansion of the conditional use, subject to coming back one more time for that IGA that'll then have the detail of it.
Alderman, Benny?
That's okay, I'll wait till it comes back.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman, ahead of- So in approving these conditional uses, we're approving that site plan with that drainage, that internal access?
Yes.
The location of the parking lot, the location of the tennis courts?
Everything is proposed.
If they design and want to build exactly that, that's what we've approved. Is there any changes to it?
No.
Do they have to come back?
That's not the way it's worded. We're, as Ross said, this is simply a conditional use permit for assembly use and variances, variations. And we didn't, this is not tied to any particular site plan.
Okay, so to what extent does the city council have the right to approve changes to the site plan?
Tonight's the night. If you want to tie it to those particular plans, these are the most current, with revised dates on it, right?
Correct.
They're different than what we have here.
I know that, I realize that.
And if they change, it has to come back?
The revisions were-
I didn't like what I heard there, it sounds like it's a work in progress.
Well, this is going through the process of approval by the city engineer and their consultants, so our manipulations here have been specific to meet those requirements of that-
Well, and cost.
Well, the shift of the detention basin, yeah.
With basin cost, right. So it's either cost base reason or engineering reasons.
But that basin's been in the same review process.
So if the detention area changes, for example, or the internal access circulation changes, for example, what's the process for approval for that? As between the district and the city?
No, we, yeah, with the city, you don't even need to ask, the city wouldn't want that change without it coming back.
Right, so is that what our conditional use says tonight?
No.
The internal, we relinquish it if we give the conditional use tonight?
Yeah, I know that's what he's doing.
So should there be an additional condition in the conditional use, right?
Should be, but I don't know what drawings you're talking about. Is this, is that called the site plan there, is that what that is?
This is the-
There's lots of other drawings other than that.
Right, so engineering plans, the site plan itself, at least as to some of the major points, so location of the parking lot, drainage, detention, internal circulation patterns, things like that, shouldn't that come back for city approval of those things changed from the site plan that we're approving tonight, or that we're considering approving tonight?
So this isn't a site plan, this is a concept plan?
No, this is a, this is a site plan, this is a permanent site plan?
So how, did you hold, we're here a little, a little prematurely, are you holding back on expenses or engineering detail until you get the approval, or where are we?
No, when, probably follow the right process, it's, yeah, it's kind of going concurrently.
Okay.
So the original submittal to the plan commission was done, you know, at the-
Earlier.
Earlier, and now our design process and review process with the city has been going concurrent with the city approval process, plan commission and city council.
How much has changed since that planning and zoning?
The, the major elements that you're seeing are all still there, the detention basin is still in the same location. We, we took this and shifted it from here to here just to keep from having to dig into that hill. Right, it looked good in two dimensions when we started to figure out how much it would cost to dig that. Not only that, with this hill being here, all that water's already being caught and into the basin. So this shift doesn't change in the sense of the city approval process, right? The other, other pieces of the site that have been changing are, you know, slight modifications to geometry to improve and manage the requirements of the city. This connection was included in there in the plan commission application, so that's the only real major internal circulation change, and that's been the same since the plan commission's middle. So material wise, you're looking at a shift here, but it's all serving the same, it still provides the same value.
So how far away are you from final, whatever a final site plan might look like?
Pretty close. We've had our second review from the city process we submitted, so it's in there.
Right, so right now, they're, excuse me, in for second review with H.R. Green. So in the initial review comments, there weren't, there wasn't much, I mean, there was a couple pages of review comments that say not much of what a project this size, it wasn't too bad. It didn't require changes to parking lot area, tennis courts.
Right.
They did alter some, I think some sizing of the pipes and some flow.
Correct.
But generally speaking, it's the, it's, it's what you're seeing right there.
Okay, so-
There's not going to be any major. And might I just add too, you know, normally, under the approval process, you know, the development site plan isn't part of the city council approval when it gets to the minor changes that come within the stormwater review or the engineering review.
Right.
You know, because those things will change, and in fact, in the planning and zoning hearing, they recommended the approval with the possibility of minor changes to those detention size, swale location, things like that, because those are things that you're going to, that you're going to find as that project moves forward. Excuse me, if we had to come back to council for every change, it would just, it would just draw that out. Now, I understand the concern, it's definitely high profile.
Yeah.
But there is that process of approval through the engineering firms that, that has to take place.
So it sounds to me like the substantial compliance with this plan might work. If that works through the city council, because they seem pretty close. And it looks like this is the only plan, there's a, there is a landscape rendering, I don't know how certain that is.
Correct.
You could approve it subject to substantial compliance with this. Is this close, this landscaping plan or is that a concept?
I think it'll just be more detailed.
The landscaping will be more detailed.
So we, so we could have had a condition, we could have had a condition that be constructed in substantial- So we, so we could have had a condition, we could have had a condition that be constructed in substantial compliance with the site plan with the last revision date that you're looking at right here, and then you'll have to make the decision on whether it substantially complies tomorrow, when you make another edit. If that's good enough, or we can, you didn't have no choice but to hold this off until the IGA's ready, bring it all back and have one look.
No, I mean, I think that, that addresses the concern, especially as it relates to certain key items, meaning drainage, internal parking circulation thing, you know, locations of major improvements, things like that, those are the key points. It's not for every, put a tree here instead of put a tree there, it's not that, but I mean, some of these future points are important.
Right, and then the site plan shows that.
But, alright, we're talking about the drainage that goes down to the city, the city property, which eventually winds up in my lot. If that's to be fixed, is that going to be the city's responsibility to have to fix that?
That's that off-site agreement?
Or is that something that is being caused by the school, that that should be actually rectified by the school?
That's just a curve because it's off-site here, and if you want to tie this up with an off-site agreement, we can do that, but we, it's a total unknown at this stage.
Well, I mean, do we, do we do it contingent upon the fact that all the drainage issues that have been brought up are being rectified or at least addressed, or what?
That just may not be resolved by the time the IGA's ready. I mean, this IGA can be done in, you know, a week, it's easy.
And I think with the other easement issues or the other drainage easement, you're dealing with individual homeowners. So I, I just don't think that it would be a smart move to tie it to this project when there's no control from these, this authority, the school, to go to a private individual and go, "Well, I hear you're having a drainage issue." It's not their responsibility, I think it's our responsibility to identify those lots and create an agreement of some sort. If you're an individual homeowner and you bought a property and you knew there was a drainage easement on it, there's an understanding that there's some maintenance required.
If there is no drainage easement on, well, you're talking about the other, okay. But what I'm getting at is, we're talking about the drainage down by me. Basically, that was created by the school, started in nineteen ninety-three and it just compounded. And it basically winds up bellying down at the city property that's behind me. Is that going to be the, the city's responsibility to fix, or should it be the school's responsibility to fix?
I think we should empower our director to do a study on where the issues are. I don't think we should encumber the school district and their project getting that moving forward. I think there are two separate issues that are linked because it's water and it's a natural flow, but I don't think it's the school district's issue to go to the individual homeowners and find, identify and find a solution. So I think we should bring that back to the right people, the right departments, to say, "Let's take a look at the big picture."
What this development is creating, will create more drainage runoff off of that corner where they're building, and which will entail and go around behind the condos and ultimately out to the city, city lot.
How about if we do this, we, we, we'll add a provision at the end of these conditions, so there'll be three conditions, the ones we talked about, and then the fourth direction is for the city administrator to bring back, when the IGA's returned, a report, to the extent he has one, with regard to that issue, so at least we have some more information. Right now, we don't have much to go on.
Well, the thing is, is, okay, if the, if the problem got rectified, who's going to be, would it be the city's responsibility to have to rectify it down the road, or would it be the school?
Well, we may know more when that, we read the agreement, we have to see what you're talking about. The city might not even be a party to that, I don't know.
Well, it's that's city property, so.
I don't know that, so-
It hits the city property.
I think we'll know more when we read it, and then we'll bring that back, and then we'll see whether that should be a further hang-up or whether it should be separated. At least we'll have some more information to go on, right now we're guessing.
Ross?
I just want to clarify one thing, and if you could back me up on this, there will be no more runoff coming off of the school property than there is now. The, the amount that is released out of that detention area will be equivalent to what it has been over the past, since it was designed.
Correct.
So the amount of runoff is the same, they cannot increase that. So, so that, that will stay the same. As far as the maintenance goes, when they've agreed to a maintenance plan, to get in there and to maintain the existing ditches and swales that will help convey that water in a route that it's supposed to go. Now, I understand that we have some issues where these drainage easements lie, and we're going to get out there in the field and take care of those, if it involves talking to homeowners, but some of these homeowners have also let their lots go in that area and, you know, it's, it's overgrown on the backside of their lots, it's not necessarily where the drainage easement is, so. But we will identify those as we go out there and walk the grounds.
But again, you made the statement that they can't add additional flows off the property.
That's correct.
But that doesn't necessarily, you didn't say that they can't add additional flows off the property in one spot, not in another, in other words, where it comes off the property can't be increased in any direction, correct?
Cannot change the natural flow of the water as it currently lies, cannot increase it. So they can't push water off the property at any other place, it has to maintain, be maintained as it is today, at the same rate or less.
It actually should be from, well, whatever, when they first started developing out there on that side of the-
Well, I mean, they're going to do, obviously, look at it today as it lies, and I, I mean, I can't tell you what happened twenty years ago, but you know, we're going to do it as a city and a reviewing engineer to make certain that the properties downstream are not affected any more than they are now. In fact, we're going to try and increase the maintenance, do the maintenance plan and help that.
Well, again, the problem winds up is, is, are you looking at, or running a new pipe from the northern lot to the detention pond?
Which northern lot?
Just the, the pipe that's there now? So there won't be any additional flows that can go, that will be taken in to the detention pond from the north end parking lot?
From here?
And for the new building?
So our plan includes amendment or modification of the storm system from here to this basin?
How does it go through to that basin?
It goes there now by-
Through there to there, okay.
And it will continue to the same end?
There won't be any additional overs, you know?
Sheet floor.
Enlarging the pipe itself?
Yes, those have been, that's actually what we were talking about for staff review, is we manipulated the pipe sizes between there, so that's part of the project improvement.
Because that becomes an issue again, like I said, any more additional flows off of there, and I know where it's going.
But it's not coming out of that pond any quicker than it did ten years ago.
I'm talking about the pond, we're talking about the, the flows along the condos and all the way down to the city property, and then eventually into my lot.
That's a different spot. The, the basin, again, the concept of the detention basin provides that attenuation, so if you have more water coming off the project site, that basin acts as a shock absorber, allows that certain amount of water to deflect, as Ross indicated, we're only allowed a certain amount of volume flow off that site based on its acreage, and we're not allowed any more or less than anywhere else in town.
It's not how much is coming off, it's much where it's coming off, that I worry about.
No, everything, we're, we're going to be incorporating more-
I mean, I'd be happy to, to walk the, the property with you, because there's a lot of issues out there, there really is. And I could point them out to you, you know where I live, so I mean, I, I just love to, you know, I want to be proactive, I want to, I want to see, like I said, a stellar project, I really do. I wasn't, I wasn't in favor of the referendum, but it passed, and let's get it as best as we can for our community. That's all I can.
Hey David, what do you got?
Go ahead. Mine's a separate issue.
Oh.
It's about traffic, so.
Well, you should do that, because I'm going to make, I'm going to state the-
I just, I didn't see this either in the planning and zoning, but the, we're in the two-hundred-plus pages of the study, but was it, was anything considered about with the addition of sophomores through seniors with start times or changes to any of the timing of when, to help with that? Because I know you said in the traffic study, the times that were currently being used was when you saw things stacked up on Crystal Lake Road. Was there any discussion about start times or end times changing? With the district or anywhere?
They'll, they'll be, we're talking about how we're going to stagger those schedules at both campuses, so yes, there is a discussion, and hopefully what we want to do is minimize the amount of traffic at, at both schools. So we are going to have to stagger, like we, we currently do between east and west, exactly what that timeframe looks like, we, we don't have that right now.
Because that would have a big effect on the traffic studies that was done earlier.
It'll, it'll stagger though, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, as long as we're on the traffic, what about Lilian Street? How much more traffic is that going to, you know, did you guys look at that as, as far as the impacts on the, the possible impacts on to Lilian? Because, I mean, we're, we're talking potentially of an additional two-hundred-and-thirty to two-hundred-and-forty students driving, and we don't know where the offset would be for the drop-offs, you know, you're adding more students, there might be fewer, fewer drop-offs, I don't know, but-
So essentially-
Coming from the east, there's going to be a lot of traffic coming in somewhere.
So we considered with the increase in traffic that predominantly since the increase in traffic is going to be serving from the students that were at the east school. So we considered the distribution coming from the north and coming from the south. At the adjacent intersections and the signals, predominantly it's going to be through volumes predominantly north and south on, on Crystal Lake Avenue, but our study area limits didn't extend to that additional signal to the north on, on Crystal Lake.
But what I'm getting at is, is you've got all these students that are going to be coming from the east part of town, basically.
Correct.
Which means if they don't take one-twenty, or they don't take Bull Valley Grove, they're going to be taking Lilian. And how much more volume of traffic are we going to be seeing on Lilian is going to be, and I don't even know, you guys could actually determine that, but have you even looked at it and tried to estimate what kind of burden that Lilian's going to might have taken because of that?
Our study didn't extend to Lilian, and, and as I mentioned before, there will be, since that change of the student population is going to shift from some of the drop-off and parent drop-off pickup to student drivers, essentially the traffic that we see at the school would, in my estimation, be with that shift in the, in the student population, be relatively consistent with what you experience right now, just since you don't have the parents coming in and coming out, where you just have a student coming in and then you have a trip of them exiting in the evening. So during those time frames, the relative increase immediate to the study area, we wouldn't expect it to be significantly different than what you see right now.
How many homes are we talking about, what is it, the Veteran Memorial on the south side of town?
Seventy-nine lots available to build out there.
That's going to add some extra, and of course, we've already had some inclines, I believe, in Legend Lakes, right? So that's going to add additional flows to Dartmore.
So our, our, yeah, our study did account for general growth within the study area. We assumed a one percent per year compounded growth rate, which we obtained traffic volume projections from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. They do projections based on socioeconomic data, looking at models that contain what regionally is happening. They look at vacant lots, what have you, land, area, et cetera, items that are planned on large scale. So the general changes in growth within this area, we feel representative, are covered within the, the general background growth rate that we did accommodate.
Go ahead.
For the traffic, I would just, just say, it doesn't matter what high school in the nation you go to, fifteen minutes before the start of school and fifteen minutes when school lets out, it's all, you're always going to have some congestion, and then generally it's going to alleviate, and, you know, we are committed and we are determined to work with the city. We have an awesome relationship with our, our police department to ensure that whatever we do, alright, and of course, we, we struggle because we only have one ingress egress, and that's difficult, all points lead to one road. But trying to minimize that impact is really the purpose of the plan, because trying to minimize the impact of that fifteen minutes before and that fifteen minutes after is really what we're trying to do, but most importantly, keep our students safe. And at the end of the day, if it warrants that traffic light is going to keep our students safe and it's going to help that flow during those congested periods, then we, we are committed to that, and we will do that because that's what's best for our school, community, and best for the city of McHenry. But it's like you said, it's going to take some time to see what the patterns look like as we move, and then we may have to readjust, but we have a great partnership with the city, we have a great partnership with our police department to make sure that we can mitigate some of the issues that the traffic increase might have. At the end of the day, we're not sure what the, the flow will look like as we separate parent drop-off, as we have less parent drop-off, you know, because that's going to now move to east campus hopefully when our freshmen are out, and we'll kind of have to see what that looks like. So we are committed to, to improving that process throughout as, as we continue, and that, that's my commitment to you. But again, when we're talking about those fifteen or twenty minutes every single day before and after school, it's always going to be tough, and it doesn't matter where you go, it's just the way, that's just the way it is. How we mitigate that is really something that we're looking, you know, we're looking at and that we're committed to, with obviously our student safety being, being paramount. But we're not going to be able to solve all of that congestion at those times, because it's just, it's just not possible.
That's why I would like to see you and the city sit down with IDOT and discuss the traffic light, because I think to some extent, if nothing else, it would bring us closer to exactly what criteria is needed and-
And like I've told you multiple times, I'm willing to sit down with anyone, you, my office is always open, I'm willing to walk, go, I've walked the, the, multiple times to figure out how we can, we can work that better. But anyone we can sit down with who can give us some expertise and some idea of how we can improve, how we can help our students be safe, we are open to, and my door is always open. Again, here, we're, we're trying to approve our conditional permit, I'll tell you right now, we get out of school in a week and a half, alright, these are time-constricted elements to this project, that we have to open school in the fall. And in order to make these awesome improvements to our school, community, to our city, we definitely need to move forward, but it doesn't mean that we are not committed to continuing to listen, continuing to meet with whoever we can meet. So then in two years now, when the project does come to fruition, we can have the very best, like you said, site and school available. So we're, we're willing to, to meet and commit with anybody, but right now, between our civil engineers, the Army Corps of Engineers, the EPA, all of our architects, everyone we've been committed to meeting with, the, the traffic commission, to try to get the very plan in front of you today so that we can make a decision to move forward, because if we don't make that decision, we do risk a delay, where opening school in August will be extremely difficult because we need this to take place so that we can't open school in August and not have any issues or any problems, so we can move forward with the other phases of the projects also. In order to move forward with the extension, we need to approve this site plan so that we have the extra parking, and we have the tennis courts, we have everything that we need so that we can open school in fall. So if we're holding it up over retention pond, I, I can say that I am committed to continuing to work, continuing to talk, but our hope is that we can move forward tonight so that we can, we can begin moving on, on the project, but we are open to talking to whoever we need to talk to.
Okay, so before, I think before you walked in, we started talking about an intergovernmental agreement, did you catch that?
Yeah, I, I did, I, I heard a little bit, I, I don't, I don't know if I'm prepared to sign an intergovernmental agreement tonight, I thought we were approving the conditional use permit, but I'm willing to listen.
We haven't written it yet, so, the real, the real problem is that it's going to take till, at least, when's our next meeting?
Third. We're approving this based on condition-
I know, but that means you can't get, if you need a permit, I don't know what you do to build, but you can't build until the third. Are you good with that?
No.
Yeah, well, that ought to be worked out tonight then, because there was proposed before you walked in the door, a motion to approve this particular site plan, subject to confirmation of a drainage easement up near Oakwood Drive, subject to the adequacy of the drainage easement to the west along that northeast-west street there, and then more importantly, subject to an IGA confirming the timing and the payment of the cost of that light, which granted is a short agreement.
But we would be responsible for the light no matter what, if, if the warrant is, is executed, and we've never been against that. We, we've answered, I believe-
Wait, 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 what makes you say that? As opposed to the city being responsible, what makes you say that district would be responsible?
That's, that's because we are the owners of the property and it's extending into our driveway, that we would be identified as responsible at this point.
Because the, the traffic warrants are based on the side street combination with the adjacent through traffic, but if there is no side street traffic intersecting through volumes, you'll never satisfy a tra-, a signal warrant, so it's, it's- So it's, it's, it's a private school benefit, so that would be.
That's just my understanding.
I confirm that with me, is that true?
True, that's true. But what, in, I guess.
The city will never be obligated to pay for this light and if it's warranted, the, the school district will be obligated to install that light in a timely fashion. Is that true or false?
I can't answer that question tonight. I mean, if we're treating this like some sort of development, trip generation and an increase in trip generation that would warrant a signal would typically is, makes the developer responsible for, for those types of improvements.
What makes us think that the trip generations are causing the warrants as opposed to a side street or additional traffic or whatever? How do we know that?
So there is, in essence, there's a basic curve that follows for the signal warrants. So the, and then there's, it plateaus and stops at a certain point where there's a minimum threshold to meet peak hour warrants and then the same holds through third, four hour warrants. Typically, the MUTCD may consider, you may look at just the peak hour in essence, or we often like to look at four hours, eight hour warrants, et cetera, for satisfying them. But there's that, there's, it is the side street that in any case, that typically, you already have.
Yeah, that's all too complicated.
Yeah, it's not a curvature through that aspect, but the volumes would be, it would be the side street that would increase to make it warranted.
And in this case, the side street would be the school or as Trey was talking about, developer. So that would be the need. Alternatively, would it be something?
We can, we can agree to this after you start building, but we need to agree to it. There has to be an intergovernmental agreement that says.
I can agree to an intergovernmental agreement, it has to go through my warrant too, so. I mean, we're here to approve the conditional permit. Now, if you, if we're looking at, we're obviously open to that, we have, you know, intergovernmental agreements with the city.
That would understand what they're talking about.
Excuse me?
We don't understand what they're talking about, so we just want a simple agreement that says upon warrants being met or IDOT dictating it, the school district will construct the light. Right? Is that the agreement?
Right, but the, would it be reasonable for a conditional use approval with the intergovernmental agreement, given them sixty days so that Ryan and then their board could approve it on their end and the city council could approve it on their end?
As long as this board agrees to the same thing, I agree, yeah.
So that gives them time to do it while they're also working on.
I just wanna make sure there's a fundamental understanding. If that's not true, then don't agree to it, of course.
Well, I, we've sent communication multiple times that we are willing to, if a warrant is approved, that we will pay for a light. I mean, we put it in writing, we've sent multiple emails, I'm not quite sure where there's a miscommunication there. And so I don't know about IDOT, I have no familiarization about what their approval process is. I can only tell you what the process that we've gone through to announce. And not to mention, I mean, I wanna do what's also safe for our students. I'll tell you right now, I, I think that we like having a police officer there to manage that traffic. At my old school, we had a police officer that we put a light up. And guess what, we had more accidents at that light because people were trying to beat the light. And so some of it's conditional upon school safety and what's best for our school, community right now. At this point, you know, we've talked about the warrant and us being willing to approve that if that warrant dictates that because of population. If it's safer for our students, at the end of the day, depending on how that traffic, I think that we're more than willing to do that. If you ask me, let's sign an intergovernmental agreement tonight based on what IDOT says or something else, I just, I can't, I can't do that tonight. All I can do is say, if the warrant exists, if it becomes a school safety issue in conjunction with our traffic commission with the police, then of course, we're gonna do what's best for the city and do what's best for our school district. That's what I can promise you.
I don't think Mr. McTate was here when we discussed the fact that I have been in contact with our state senator.
Sure.
And he has been in contact with, with IDOT. And he vehemently stresses that it's important for the school and the cities to get together with IDOT. And I have the representative to get ahold of, to sit down and discuss the light. You know, it's, it's different than a regular intersection type light. I mean, you know, this is again, we're looking for something, we're not looking for something that's gonna work all day, just, you know, at the times that are needed to get, you know, potentials.
Right now, things are very effectively managed on a daily basis with our officer. He keeps things moving, he can anticipate what's going on. And, and you know, really, we have very limited accidents in that realm, having that officer. I'm not saying that it's not warranted down the line to have a light. I trust the experts that we hire, our civil engineers to talk about drainage, our, and our architects to tell us how to build, our traffic study to kind of determine, you know, what do we need at this point? And so what I can assure you is that we do agree that if warranted, we would get that light. If IDOT comes in and they have a recommendation, I'm sure that would be part of the consideration too. However, I would hesitate about signing an intergovernmental agreement or talking about intergovernmental tonight because I just don't know what, what my board would think or what, you know, the different experts that we have working on this project would let us know. But, you know, again, I will listen to whatever you.
But again, you're saying that you can't make any commitments without your board, but you want us to make the commitments without the, you know.
We've gone through the process, we've gone through this process with submitting our paperwork, we've gone through the zoning and planning, we've submitted, we've worked in good faith. We answered your questions via an email, now twice, I mean, we've had a couple of different conversations. You're asking me to talk about something with IDOT that I just learned about today. I can't sit here and commit to something that I just learned about today. However, we have been meeting with the city regularly for three months. So that's the process we've undertook. And so this isn't like we're springing something on the council this evening. I feel like we have gone through the process in good faith and any recommendations that the council has made or members have asked, we've tried to be very upfront and transparent and answer those questions to the best of our ability.
Again, all we're looking at is the fact that if IDOT's good with it, then there's criteria that IDOT is willing to prove it, that we would move forward with it. I mean, you and, and the mayor or whoever the mayor selects to sit out what IDOT, and IDOT might say, you know, well, no, not until the whole thing is done and then you have to take, and then who knows what they say? I mean, you know, the thing is though, is it's a lot easier talking to somebody than opening up a book and say, well, this is what it says. And that's all I'm saying, is let's try to be proactive and try to see the best way we can get that traffic light in rather than, I mean, needless to say, there was discussion of planning and zoning and there's been discussion tonight on it. And I understand, you know, like you say, safety and everything else. And I'm not saying that the traffic light is always the solution to everything, but it's basically, there's a lot of schools that have put lights in now rather than having an officer out there directing traffic. There must be a reason for it.
And we're saying that we're open to that, we're saying that we are.
And that's all we're looking at.
And if warranted and conditions, then we are, we are open to that as we've definitely stipulated here.
The terminology of warranted versus approval of IDOT is a little different.
I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll go on another.
I, I think we've reached an agreement that the school needs to move forward. I think our ideas have been met. So I would love to see a sixty day window to get those conditions met because clearly you need to take it back to your board and you should, but I don't wanna hold the project up. If they don't start this yesterday, it's gonna be a bigger mess in August. So if you can draft that.
Sixty days, okay.
A sixty day, just to get to an IGA.
The IGA about the light and then the drainage?
There's no IGA on the drainage.
The drainage is already.
That's just giving them.
So just an IGA on the light?
Yeah.
I think we can do sixty days, I think we can, we can figure that one out.
Okay, so do you wanna incorporate that into the motion?
I would.
Okay, so the proposed.
Within sixty days.
Yeah, so everybody got on the same page, so the motion.
If you'd spell it out so that we know exactly what the motion is.
I can do it.
Oh, okay, I thought you were waiting on me.
No.
Take your time.
Motion to approve, the proposed motion would be a motion to approve the request of conditional use permit for an assembly use and variations requested for the property located at forty-seven twenty-four and forty-seven sixteen West Crystal Lake Road, McHenry High School, west campus, subject to the following. Number one would be execution of an intergovernmental agreement regarding the timing and payment of costs for future installation of traffic light along Crystal Lake Avenue. Number two, confirmation to the satisfaction of the city council of the adequacy of the storm drainage easement along Kensington. That's to the south of the school. Number three would be that the site be constructed in substantial compliance with the site plan presented tonight with the last revised date of.
Probably today.
Today.
May five, twenty.
May twentieth, two thousand nineteen. And the last condition would be presentation of information by the staff relative to the northwest drainage agreement and the staff's review of that adjacent to Oakwood Drive.
What's northwest drainage?
That would be west. That's your, that's the drainage agreement where you said there's some private owners?
One thirty-nine. That's one thirty-nine, B and Z, catch me in locks.
Kensington, so it's the same agreement?
Yeah, it's probably the same, same agreement.
Okay, so that would be the north, the west drainage agreement, that's one thirty-nine.
And the only other amendment we're looking for is that first intergovernmental would be executed within six days. So did you say that?
Yeah, I actually said it, so.
He started with that.
Yeah. Then sixty, then sixty days.
And that would, that would clearly be only if a traffic light was actually necessary, because it seems as though it's not.
Right, I said, the agreement will deal with the timing and payment. It will work out the timing as far as the warrants versus IDOT or whatever the language should be in the agreement.
And the agreement would be, in other words, whenever it does need approval of IDOT.
Well, not actually approval of IDOT, correct? I mean, it is.
Whichever one applies.
Correct.
Alderman Glad keeps referring to IDOT as opposed to the warrants, I don't understand that, so we'll deal with that in the agreement. Whichever requires the light to be installed.
So a motion on that? Alderwoman Miller?
I'll move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Alderwoman Bane? Last discussion on this item? Alderwoman Bane?
Well, Dr. Van Tagg is here, I just wanna say that while this process is so painful to actually get through, that this is such an exciting time for the school district and for our kids here in McHenry. And I wish mine had these opportunities and as I sit on the college board and the workforce board here in the county as well, I know that this is really gonna prepare our students for the things we offer as a community to come next. So thank you and I know we'll all get through this.
Appreciate it. If I could just say, we are going to build really what I believe is gonna be the most comprehensive, competitive high school system, not just in the area, but the state. And, and not to mention, just the remediation that we're doing at east campus to make that a great environment for our freshmen. But most importantly, I can assure you that it's gonna be on a sustainable framework for the next twenty-five years. And we're gonna continue putting those investments to constantly get better and better and better. It's gonna be beautiful and it's gonna be wonderful for our city to have probably one of the best high school districts in, you know, the state of Illinois, not just the area here. So thank you for your support and thank you for everything you guys do, we really appreciate it. And we're gonna get through this stuff because we are open and we're willing to listen to any suggestions and feedback you might have.
Thank you, Ryan. Any other comments? Please call the room. Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bane?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Nahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glapp?
Yes.
Alderman Santhi?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Good luck.
Good luck with all of you and Ryan, I appreciate the partnership, so.
It's awesome.
Alright, now get a bill.
We will. Yeah, we will. Is that it?
That's it.
So you're gonna contact me?
Yeah. We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda is item nine A, Jessup Manufacturing Tax Abatement. Derek, Derek, you wanna go ahead?
Sure, I'll at least introduce this, Mr. Rob Jessup's here from Jessup, I think most of you know him and he'll take the floor here in a second. This is a little bit of a unique situation, but we felt it was important to come before council as a discussion item. Primarily because Jessup Manufacturing is looking at doing, raising some buildings and doing a major expansion to their operations here in McHenry. As you know, they've been here a very long time, they're looking at a over six million dollar investment, adding a bunch of new jobs as part of a project. And, and part of the challenge that they're running up against obviously is cost to be able to complete the project or undertake the project. And they submitted, Mr. Jessup has a packet that I'll hand out to you that has the information in it. But they submitted at least a preliminary application for, for one of our programs, the underutilized property tax abatement incentive program. And a portion of that program is, or all of the program really is for the identification of any type of waivers or property tax abatements to be able to undertake a project like this. And as you know, some of the council members know, because we've gone through it on other projects like with Fabrique, the, the time and effort that it takes to initiate, request all the taxing bodies, we only control a small, small portion of our property tax bill. We can't waive or speak for those other taxing bodies. That's something that we can work with the petitioner on, but primarily the petitioner takes the lead on that. And before going through that lengthy or involved process with the other taxing bodies and engaging them, Mr. Jessup wanted to appear before council to at least let you know what the scope of the project is out there, what at least the preliminary requests are, what his intent is moving forward with the rest of his requests and at least answer any, any questions that council may have. Really what we're looking for coming out of this discussion tonight is an understanding from council of what the scope of the project is and some consensus from council that is supportive of this type of effort, of the expansion of Jessup so that we can then move full forward, Mr. Jessup, and with, with staff input and support and approaching other taxing bodies to start requesting the property tax abatement through them, a lot like we did through the Fabrique process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jessup.
Rob, why don't you step up to the podium, see your name and address for public record?
Thank you, Derek. Hi, I'm Rob Jessup, president of Jessup Manufacturing. With me is Wesley Ferguson, our director of finance and a key member of our leadership team. You already have one, right? Could be one short, I'm sorry, I'll give you my little notes in a later.
We're good.
Wes, cut that out. Well, as Derek mentioned, we've been in the community. A couple of slides that tells the story of Jessup, but the best story is right behind Wayne. You're founded by a grandfather in a garage right along the river and we sent and relocated to our, our site in McHenry, right on Route one twenty. We have two facilities in, for Jessup Manufacturing, one in Lake Bluff, Illinois and our primary facility here at McHenry. We've been operating here for sixty-three years. We think we're a great citizen within the community and our desire is to continue to grow here. Our business has been strong and as Derek mentioned, we are running out of space, we're looking at, at options. Before I tell you where I wanna go, I wanna kinda show you and demonstrate what we've already done. So if you go to the second tab and, about the fifth slide in, you're gonna see, you're gonna see a really nasty looking facility and the next slide will be essentially the original building at Lake Bluff. So what I'm trying to show you here is what we have done in our facility in, in Lake Bluff as an example of what we wanna do here in McHenry. If you go to the next page, page seven, that is what our site here in, in Lake Bluff looks like. And that is really essentially same, same design criteria that we're looking to do here within McHenry. So if you, I guess the, do a next slide in there for you too, Wayne, that's, that's the Wayne Jetta of, of Lake Bluff shaking my hand. We have received tremendous recognition within Lake Bluff for the work that we did there. We've really transformed, you know, that part of the community. Since, since the fact that we completed this, this building, the whole area has been redeveloped. And we really wanna bring that footprint and that success to the east part of, of McHenry here. McHenry here. You go to the next, the next slide on, in the handout, it's sort of a chronological layout of our expansion plan, and it all starts with, with water. What Derek didn't mention is when we were annexed by the city multiple, like, through almost three decades ago, we never had water extended to our property. For us to move forward with this project, we do need to extend water all the way up to our current location. With the help of, of Mayor Jet and, and Mr. McCarter, we've been working with, it's up to four different property owners covering a number of parcels to move the water essentially from the east part of the Adams property, the, the park, the dog park lane, all the way up to our, our facility. For us to move that water at our expense, it's between two hundred and thirty-three thousand and up to maybe four hundred thousand dollars worth of cost for us to move that water all the way up Route 120. And in addition to that, we do have a tremendous amount of site prep costs as well in terms of raising, you know, some of the existing buildings around and then building out our, our development. If we can, you know, then move, move this thing forward. Our desire is to add essentially thirty-five thousand square foot of, of manufacturing space to our existing property of sixty thousand square feet. We see a lot of benefits to the community if, if we move forward with this. I've already mentioned the infrastructure improvement. We will be at our cost moving water all the way up Route 120, thereby hopefully leading to redevelopment of that whole area, everyone with other property owners who have access to water. One of the other key things is that in our design, and we can talk about our design later, we're going to be moving our docks to the back of the facility, which will reduce tremendous amount of truck congestion on Route 120. So trucks will just pull right in, go to the back, head a truck turnaround, load and unload, and leave. So we believe that's going to be important in terms of reducing congestion, but also improving the safety. With this expansion, our vision is to add a lot of jobs, jobs not just for, you know, the community here. I want to draw from those talented District 156 high school kids and put them into Jessup. But we're also going to be creating jobs for all the vendors and, and the builders within the community. And most importantly, really improve the aesthetics along Route 120. I believe that that is really the gateway to, to McHenry. They're coming from the east, the first thing you see when they enter town, and when you leave it, the last thing you see. And I want to set up a beautiful building there and hopefully draw more attention to this, this wonderful community. The next page is really all the numbers, and this is really the good news for you guys. We're projecting, and if you go to the third tab, and you can work back with all the math, but, you know, based on our current assessed value and the investment that we're looking to make, the addition here in, in terms of additional property tax for McHenry and McHenry County taxing bodies is a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year. That's a lot of money. What we're asking for is, is a tax abatement. We're asking for a hundred percent tax abatement for, for at least five years to help us finance the investment, primarily in the infrastructure, in the demolishing of these buildings so that we can build this, build this facility.
Did you say five?
Minimum of five years. I'd like to ask for ten, but Wayne doesn't want me to get too greedy. But the, the reality is that the economics are, are challenged. Again, we are moving the water all the way up to our facility at, at our expense. There's a tremendous amount of site prep costs, so before we even get started, you know, there's partly well access, a path mode of, close to a quarter million dollars just to get ready to build a building.
And you're, and you're talking about just the city portion of it, right?
Well, yeah, yes. So the last tab in, in the binder is the, is, as Derek mentioned, the, the application that has been completed and filled out.
The one seventeen is everybody, though.
That would be everybody, correct? McHenry is roughly about seven thousand a year.
We suggested to start here and then at this point, the other taxing bodies. Does anyone have any questions for Rob?
Okay, so right now, you're asking for a hundred percent for five years?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's been documented. You guys, staff has been looking at this, reviewing it?
Yep, Doug's been working on it, yep. And, and again, from this point, you know, this is only, this is only a discussion item tonight, but what we would do is, is, you know, bring this back for a formal approval before council, but then also begin engaging those taxing bodies and, and their, and their requests to them like we did with Fabrique. I mean, we feel that's part of our, our responsibility under economic development for expansion of existing businesses, retention of businesses, is to help make those connections. I mean, if you want to call it make the pitch, it's make the pitch, to help explain why maintaining this business in McHenry is important to all the taxing bodies.
And also keep in mind real quick is that they would be buying the parcel to the east, west, right, to clean up that property?
It's already been done.
Okay, that's already been done. And then the buildings to the east, the homes, those would be demolished and cleaned up, and then in addition to that, they would actually fix the whole facade of the building and which would make the entrance to our city on that east side.
Is it, are you saying right up to the, that, what's that one road that cuts through the River Road?
Yes, north side. North side.
So you would, you've purchased all the way up to that corner already? And then there's some houses on there too. Did you purchase those back?
They're part of our parcel.
Oh, right. When he said houses, I was thinking.
There's that white house that we met at, actually, for teaching planning. That, that will become essentially, that would become, it's over here, so this is Route 120 across the front, that would all become parking lot. This is our existing building. Our vision would be to add thirty thousand square foot of additional facility in the back. We will clean up all those old metal buildings, and there's that building right in front, the old Joseph Fred Building. That'll all go down. So this will be trucks would just pull in, do a turnaround, be in the back, straight in, and then the whole front of our, of our building then would be remodeled and it would all be office. We'd add additional office space. So essentially, when you'd be coming along Route 120, the north view would be beautiful blended in offices with, you know, the, the warehouse in, in back. It'll look very similar to that, that graphic of what our Lake Bluff facility looks like, just bigger and prettier. And then McHenry.
I got, are you looking at making any changes regards to getting in and out of the property with, with the change in your, where you're loading trucks? You don't have to do anything like that?
Yeah, your, your cuttings are already where you need them.
Cuttings are right where we are, yeah. And, and they've, and they reviewed this already? Where I had that?
There's no change to it.
There's no change to it. Okay, there's nothing?
If anything, it's a lot safer having those trucks going.
If you've ever been there, when he's getting, when you're either getting a delivery or freight's going out?
Yeah.
The, the trucks go all the way across and stop?
On one.
Traffic on 120.
Yeah, they, they park in that middle section, the middle median, they just, they back right up, and they back in, which essentially shuts on all the, of the, all the eastbound traffic. So now they'd be able to, come either, girls would come east or west, just turn eight, go straight to the back, and come right through it. We believe it would be a very large advantage.
How many employees?
Right now, we have a hundred employees.
How many would this add?
Depending on, on the product, that's probably between twenty-five and fifty over the next, next five, eight years. Any other questions?
Are you going to change what you're doing in that facility with it larger, or are you just going to expand? As I know you do different things in your Lake Bluff.
Right, we would just, we would continue what we're doing there, which is really the, the slitty and the package and the distribution, as well as really expand our, our office. Part of this plan would be an additional five thousand square foot of office space, which would just cement this as our headquarters, and we would continue to add front office staff there as well.
We did give you a plaque for like seventy years, didn't we?
That was sixty, actually.
There's no pictures in there. But. Although, Wayne, you do look better than that other guy.
What's that? I do, I do. I was actually looking at it, and I'm like, nah, I'm looking good. Four more years, I probably will look like worse, whatever. And again, I, I appreciate the time. I really value the consideration. And again, just to be very transparent, the challenge over happened is just the, the cost to get this project to work, and a large part of it is, is the site prep. And we are at our cost moving water, water main, almost twelve hundred feet, you know, across, you know, foreowners' properties, and then, and then tapping in. That, as well as all the demolition before we even get started. And you guys, the cost of construction just keeps going up, new versus existing. So it's, I'm like, you know, finance guy to my, my right here just keeps showing me the numbers, and they keep going up and up, and it's, it's really a challenge to justify it.
So at this point, I'm looking for consensus by council to bring back an agreement for a tax abatement on the increment, increase for five years. Do I have a proposal by everybody?
No. It's what, an agreement or is that a resolution? No, he's just looking for consensus.
Just consensus, bring it back. Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Okay.
Is it a payment agreement right now? Yeah. All right, everyone agree with that?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it. You did a great job, sir. David, you wouldn't believe what I got today.
You got a sign?
I got the sign.
Nice.
All right, thank you for helping with that.
It's numbered sky.
That was worth coming today.
Sure was. All right, thank you, guys. Next, next item on the agenda is nine B, Thielen Dredging Material Agreement. David?
We have the agreement with Thielen Group to use their, their, their disposal area off of 120 over Lake Moore to dispose of the dredging from Fox Waterways efforts using our city trucks or contracted trucks. And they're, in fact, they're doing the work today. We worked out the pricing and all that. We're bringing that back to you at the next meeting. I, I don't really think, I mean, we need a consensus, I guess, but you haven't seen the agreement, so I don't expect too much of a consensus. It was what we expected from Dan Shepherd on behalf of Thielen. I can't even remember the pricing. It was, it was good, though. Ten dollars for the first five hundred trucks and then twenty or thirty?
This is just, is it his trucking and taking it? It's just for where this wheels are going.
We've contracted with Sunset, Lake and Hills to truck for us.
And that, that was price per load to dump it?
Price per truck, yeah.
That's a great price.
Yeah, usually it's over a hundred dollars, a hundred.
Hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten dollars. In an exchange for that, we're releasing Thielen from the letter of credit obligations for the, for the light improvement on Route 31 when warrants are met, and the letter and crew, letter, the public improvements for that thirty-eight lot, thirty-eight acre development that, or land that they own in the corporate center there, subject to when building, before any building permits are issued, they will issue new letters of credit at that time. So I'll explain more of that when, when the agreement's presented to you. We're losing a little bit of ground in this agreement because we have them tied up pretty tightly. Back several years ago, there was a proposed developer sage, I think it's Boe. Anyway, somebody was in McHenry.
Doesn't, doesn't matter now.
And develop on that thirty-eight acres. They pulled out, but before they pulled out, Thielen had already executed letters of credit in our favor, which run through the annexation agreement term, which is 2023. We would be releasing those letters of credit, but that's the consideration for letting us use the disposal site. So I will go through that agreement in detail with you so you understand what we're getting and what we're giving up, and then we'll make our decision. But tenderly, we have a handshake because we needed that dredge material to be taken. So we'll get that agreement to you on the third. Hopefully that's comfortable.
All right. Our next item is nine C, full service person, personal care establishment liquor licenses. Chief, you want to start this one off?
Oh, sure, thank you. Just for an item for discussion, just as if we brought the bring your own alcohol license to you, we've, we've received some interest from personal care businesses in town for the ability to be able to serve alcohol as part of a package of a service that they're buying. And so in doing a little research, we found there's, there's other towns that have established a liquor license of this sort. It's a little bit different in the sense that, like an example I would give you is Algonquin's, that if you are a personal care business and you sell four or more products as a group to an individual that's coming in, so you decide to get your haircut, and then you decide to get your hair dyed, and then you get your nails done, and you get a, a massage as a package deal, you're there, that it includes the service of two glasses of wine while you're there. So we wanted to bring it to council to see what their thought was on this. I did ask David to look into it, that if we are going to move forward with any type of a license like this, how, how in fact is that tied to gaming? Because I knew that question would come up. And Dave, I'll let you give your, your, your response, but it would open up the door for gaming.
Yeah, if we would. Definitely. That, that would be a definite qualification for gaming.
Do they have to have food served for a gaming license or just a liquor license?
No, I don't know what, what started that. Food's not mentioned in the game.
I think that was something that was discussed here, that fifty percent of it would be food or something.
I know that the mayor had received a couple, or at least one request from businesses already.
Yeah, I received one also for my ward. I actually have family and friends that do this in other cities, but they offer it for free, and you don't have to have a license to do that. It's part of their package. So I don't know how that works in here, but I know in Lake Geneva it works. And they, if you're offering it either for free or part of the package, like for example at, at a, a women's store, the husbands are offered, or the men who are there with are offered a free cigar and a beer while they're sitting there in the wife's shops or whatever. That, that's been, they have done that without a liquor license, so. And the thing that I think is, is, I think this is a great idea, but I think the precedent of giving a liquor license out for this would be a, a bad precedent to start here, only because we, again, we lead the area with the gaming establishments, and I know that the, in this particular instance, they said we're not going to get that, but it just opens the door for the next person, and we've already had those alcohol non-traditional requests, and I just think we've got to tread very lightly on that. And, and maybe this falls under the BYOB or your, your, you know, we got to find creative ways to work this out, but I don't know if we want to go down the road of a license. That's just my opinion.
For, oh, I'm sorry. For clarification, the definition under the gaming refers to a licensed establishment as any licensed retail establishment where alcoholic liquor is either drawn, poured, mixed, or otherwise served for consumption on the premise. And that's what David had tackled with us.
So that would apply here?
And there's no way to have a condition that this particular license restricts gaming?
No. No, once you issue the license, the only right you have is to not issue the license.
I mean, as someone that spends six hours getting my hair done every time, and it's not, it's actually not in the city, but they do bring in champagne, and, you know, one thing that I really feel strongly about in the businesses in our community is there's so much competition online and in adjoining communities that maybe have a little stronger economic development programs. And I think it's really important that we create experiences in the businesses here in town. And I don't know, I mean, I totally, I absolutely understand the issue of gaming, but I also think that it's really important for us to empower business owners to create experiences for people that come in there, to keep our community the place that people want to go for these kinds of services. So it'd be fantastic if we found an, an option for that, even if it's maybe not a license.
Do they have a liquor license where you?
I have no idea. I doubt it, and actually, they, but they have an adjoining business that does, and a lot of times they'll swap, you know, they'll bring in food and, you know, that sort of, so I, I, it may not be legal. I have no idea. And I'm not going to say where.
Yeah, right.
But I am saying, but it is really a, a nice experience for the people that are there, and it's not an overconsumption issue, it's, you know... But I am saying, but it is really a nice experience for the people that are there and it's not an overconsumption issue. It's, you know, I don't know, it'd be nice if we found a way to.
Chief, there's some regulatory part of this too with BACA training, right? Do they require that?
If we were to move forward with this type of license, this would be a a license that would be similar to our class A, B, or C. You would have to get city council approval. At the end of the day, they are serving the alcohol, which means they would have to receive BACA training would apply to them just as if they were a bar or a sit-down restaurant that serves. At the end of the day, they're, you know, they're providing those two glasses of wine or those two bottles of beer as part of the package deal, so the, you know, in one aspect, they're saying, we're not selling it, but in fact, if you're paying two hundred dollars for the package and you get it, you are in fact buying it. But even take that thing out of consideration, they're serving it to you. They're literally serving to us, not bring your own, which we just, you know, we just established, they're serving it to you, so therefore that's where that, that license comes into play and that's, that's where it's tied to video gaming.
I think the same thing applies to those places that serve food. If there's health code regulations, if they're making the food there, if you're giving it away, you skirt all those things. I mean, if they're giving food away at establishments, the same, those same issues would apply, so. I mean, I, David, you could correct me on that, but I'm thinking that, that would be the case if they're preparing food for people and, and that are being consumed on premise.
I'm sure that's a health code violation of some sort that's.
Yeah, they're either regulations they have to meet.
Area of expertise.
All the one and nine.
So I would have to guess that this is already happening and we just aren't regulating it, um, because.
Much like.
It's not here at McHenry this way.
So I would love to be creative and find a way to make this okay so that we can promote that we're doing it and let our enterprises promote that they can. I, I have a wedding coming up and we're gonna spend six hours in the salon. I hope they have the right to serve me. So I would like us to put our creative minds together and find a way. I think that would be good. And I don't know if that's creating another class. I have no idea how that process works. I'm willing to learn and I think we can.
You know what, it's not, we can regulate it, we can permit it. The only issue that's come up before the new council here was gaming. If you don't worry too much about gaming, the service will be there.
I mean, I can't really imagine, I mean, going into, you know, into a salon, and I'm not sure how often you guys are doing that, um, that anybody would think that that was a good experience for their clients. I mean, having a glass of wine, a glass of champagne is a great experience. Having a gaming space and even accommodating a gaming, a gaming space in these areas seems pretty unlikely. I, I understand there is a risk, but it doesn't seem very likely. And if it comes up for renewal every year, is it, is there an opportunity to say, hey, they, they went and applied for gaming, we're not going to renew the liquor license because that wasn't our intent? Can we do that?
Yeah, we actually, um, sorry, man.
Yeah, go ahead.
So on the, on the revised liquor license application that was done, uh, when we revised the liquor ordinance with the new classes a few months ago, we actually asked the question on there, do you intend to apply for a video gaming license? Not that we can control that, but just so they, we, we ask them the question and they say yes or no. And then they also, you know, once we, this is a license that would be approved by council, council could ask that question for a verbal answer from them whether or not they want to, they intend to have video gaming or not. And, you know, while they could certainly get their liquor license and go get video gaming the next week, if they say no on their license, on their application and no verbally at the council level here, you know, you could certainly remember that as a city council person. The next year, when they come before council to get their liquor license approved, to say, look, you said you weren't gonna do it and you did it. And I'm not gonna approve your liquor license next, this year because you've done it. So, and you can even make that clear to them as part of your approval, not that it can be a condition because they have the, the right to go get that video gaming license, but you can make it clear to them on the record that that's how you feel about the video gaming part of it.
Seems like a solution.
Oh, Sandy? No, I, I, I mean, doesn't it, I, look, I wanna be creative, but I, I, I just, if we open up an avenue that even those, they, they will publicly state that they are not gonna take up gaming and they check the box that we now have on our liquor license, that they're not gonna plan on gaming. They can always start it. Yes, we could pull back the license next year, but does that not put us in? I mean, that's a, that's a litigation, that's a, that's a, that could be a major legal problem that we could be sitting on for years trying to deal with it.
Right.
And I don't know if I want to go down that avenue.
I can't predict the outcome of that, but you have arguments at least that you didn't have before.
All of that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, um, some of the council members had problems as far as how many gaming licenses were given out. Uh, sooner or later, it's gonna be, how many liquor licenses are we giving out? And, um, you know, I mean, is, are we gonna get a reputation that any, any place you go in McHenry, you get a drink? You know, I, I don't know. I, you know, I, I tend to think it's something I'd like to think about a little bit longer because of the fact that I just hate to, to see that we're lined up so widespread. We're, we're gonna be addressing in, in no time at all. Never wanna let's not lose control of liquor and then, then we gotta deal with that afterwards. We're gonna wind up with places like this, you're gonna wanna be able to sell that to the latter.
I also don't think we want a reputation that we aren't supporting our businesses and allowing them to create experiences for their customers. I think that's something that our economic development commission and our economic development team here in the city has been working pretty hard at trying to establish for businesses as well.
But by doing this, are we creating more competition against the liquor license holders now that the person that went and got their personal care done and now they're gonna go have a cordial somewhere, uh, well, now they're gassed, so they don't need to go somewhere else. I don't know. I, I'm just saying, that's why I, I want to have time to think about that because what are the ramifications and what are the ramifications to the other businesses that are there? You know, you have businesses that open up that are specifically geared to the liquor type business. Now you're giving liquor licenses to other types of businesses that are taking away from it. It's just like when we did video gaming and, uh, the council at that time was sold about the fact that you know, certain entities, and there were certain entities that needed it to stay afloat. About that video gaming. And then they got it and they were doing quite well. But then as more and more entities came into town, also the percentages of what they were getting dwindled, dwindled, dwindled. Sooner or later, and I, I know you could say that, well, you know, the tough, the last lasted out and, you know, that's capital, it's for you, but, um, we're here to support the businesses that are here now. And if they existed without a liquor license and we're giving a liquor license that's gonna hurt another business. And again, like I said, it's just thoughts off the top of my head without really having a long time, you know, after we've had discussions to really think about it. I think it's something that maybe we break back later, but, uh, I don't know, I've got reservations, but.
My concern is where do we draw the line? Um, next is laundromats.
It's a great model, by the way, laundromats that serve liquor, a lot of money in the city, it was an FYI.
Point is though, we're, it's, laundromat's gonna want liquor and they're on gaming and it's just opens it up to more. Oh, I think we gotta draw the lines. I understand the, the experience of going, I don't know personally, but I understand what you're saying about going and having the experience of it, but another business owner comes to us and wants it for some other business and then we're.
Well, I, I think you could, uh, you, you could carve this narrowly. Now that you brought that up, I mean, we could create a liquor license for particular businesses. As a home rule, any, um.
Isn't that what we did, full service personal care?
Yeah, if you're talking about four services, I mean, you're talking about probably five to six hundred dollars someone's investing in their afternoon. And they're really not deciding whether they're gonna go get their nails, hair and everything else done or go hang out at the gambler. I don't, I don't feel like it's a competitive issue, but I do think that there's opportunity like Officer Burke said.
Give you a shot of beer while I get my poodle trip.
Maybe, maybe I could provide some further clarification. So, um, the conversation is for personal care establishment only. So that would be defined as an establishment that offers multiple personal care services only. At least four different services in addition to, to the serving of that glass of wine or beer, which may be included, uh, but not limited to hair treatments, haircuts, nail treatments, body packs, wraps, exfoliation, waxing, aromatherapy and facials is what the traditional definition of a personal care facility is. So it is very narrow to that type of a business.
What about washing and waxing and shampooing my car?
Personal care, not vehicle care. So this is a personal care and then, you know, just provide some insight to council on, um, what some of the limitations are to that particular license. It is a personal care establishment to serve, not sell and consume any beer or wine only for consumption on the license premise as an incidental part of a full service personal care service. The license shall be subject to the following conditions, so limited individual servings, um, the serving of a beer or wine incident for consumption on the premise shall be limited to individual servings, not to exceed two per person, uh, four ounces of wine or later on, four ounces, eight ounces of beer. The operational hours can only stay consistent with the traditional operation hours of that business, so if the hair salon or the personal care service closes at eight P M, that's, that's what the hours of operation are. Live entertainment is prohibited. There can be no signs or external advertisement or indeca whatsoever on the business that advertises or indicates that alcohol liquor is available, so therefore it doesn't take away from that competition from a bar that's licensed or a restaurant that's licensed. And cannot be issued to a personal care facility within a hundred feet of a daycare or a childcare facility. That, those are the restrictions and guidelines that Algonquin placed into theirs when they issued their license.
Talking to the chief over there, have they had any issues?
It's too early to tell. They, uh, they, Dave.
Yeah, a couple of months.
This is, this is a month or two old on Algonquin's side. They do not have the amount of, of gaming parlors we do, you know, and if they have an issue, they haven't expressed, and I have regular contact with Chief, which he, but they have any concerns with that.
Does every one of their employees have to have BACA training?
Uh, the fact that they're serving it, yes.
Yes.
They would, according to our ordinance, they would. They would have to be BACA trained and then supply a certificate per file at the police department.
So the person that doesn't actually normally give it out, but they should have BACA training because all they have to do is hand it once and they'd be in violation?
Correct. If they're gonna serve it or pour that glass of wine for the customer, they would have to have BACA training, yes.
So not every employee, just the employees that are serving?
Anybody's serving.
Yeah.
Paul, what do you have?
So we agree to this and then next month, somebody approaches us about a different kind of business and then we go through the process and say, well, no, beauty salons can have that, but your business can't have it. And then a month later, somebody else comes to us with another idea.
That would be the exercise.
For what, for what it's worth, I did just a little research in surrounding communities. I haven't seen, you know, from some of the more progressive communities, I haven't seen anybody with more than bring your own alcohol license, which is kind of outside the norm, although that's becoming more popular, and a personal care license. I have not seen any other ones come up yet. Um, the only addition I've seen is that there are bring your own licenses that now allow people to bring their own alcohol into a licensed establishment and pay a corking fee to have it served and that, David, and he's, he's a regular with this type of behavior. We don't have any establishments in town, we're not set up for that in McHenry, but that, that is another common thing where you can bring your own bottle of wine and pay a corking fee and they will serve it to you while you're in their restaurant or their bar because you wanted that one special bottle. David?
Paul, what do you have to say, David? Okay, if a personal ser, personal services storefront open tomorrow, and they were doing enormous, different, many different types of services, it's definitely more than four. Could they offer their customer as they're getting hair, nails, whatever, a, a glass of wine at no charge? Okay, does that?
So that's how this is set up.
Is it on this umbrella or in it?
You have to buy four items off the, off the menu. That's how Algonquin's decide. You have to buy four items off the menu. And when you buy four items, you automatically get two four-ounce glasses of wine or two eight-ounce, eight-ounce glasses of beer at no charge, but it's built into the package. That's where it comes back to when David looked at video gaming, you still serving it.
I only have two services, Doug. I, I, I get charged for my wine then?
No. You can turn down the wine, you can accept the wine, you still pay the same price for the four items that you.
I'm only doing two.
Pardon me?
I'm only doing two services.
You're not eligible for the wine. According to what Algonquin's, you have to buy four items. They don't want people to come in and just get a haircut and get a free beer or a free glass of wine. They have it set up where you're actually spending, it's an experience and you're spending four hours there. I, I, I don't do any of these things, so I don't. I don't have any vested interest in this other than to present the facts to council.
Two of four-ounce, uh, glasses of wine aren't gonna last four hours either.
Does that mean you go down the street, get a massage and have, have a glass of wine while it's happening or what?
Okay. But as a salon owner, I, I I could offer my customers a free glass of wine around, correct?
No.
If I'm operating a salon?
It would be against the law to serve alcohol in a public setting to a person. This, again, it would be consumption of alcohol in an unlicensed business.
You have to figure it out, what license is it. You have to apply for one.
We have to create it.
Could not be under the umbrella of BYO license.
It could be if you bring your own.
Then, then the customer has to bring their own and, 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 and and the business cannot serve it. They cannot pour it, they cannot mix it. They can't do any of those things because then they're, they're crossing over into the realm of what a class A, B, or C type license would look like.
Or an A, B, not a C, that's package.
Which I'm assuming is not the experience that these locations are trying to provide.
I don't have that experience.
You know, when I was, when we were researching the bring your own alcohol license and in conjunction with the letters that more than one council member received, that's why we brought it to you tonight. We just kinda wanted to get, if you want us to do some research and you'd like us to bring something back, we're just looking for a general consensus. If this is something that we want to look towards.
I, I would like to see more information. Um, I, I do a lot of traveling, as you may all know, and this is a trend and that's a catch. That's a reason to go to that salon to have those services. So instead of, you know, a la carting it, you're gonna package it, you're gonna bundle it and it's attractive and it's attractive for destination events. People who are doing class reunions or people who are doing weddings or family reunions, that's just an extension of that experience. We don't have a handful of salons that would probably offer that or even be considering that. And I'm glad that one of our salons has asked, cause that means they're on the forward edge and looking for a new business. I would love to see more information and I think it's something we can get creative with.
Is that, who agrees to that?
I agree.
If I think it's bad, as, as long as there's no gaming involved in that license, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, that's what David said. We could make it very limited in nature.
Yeah.
Well, no, you could make it limited in the sense that we could take a risk of the salons doing it, they're not doing gaming and exclude the car washes and whatever else was brought up as examples. We could narrowly grant it just for this group and see how it goes. But then the next guy could come in and ask for, you know, the next use, you know, to deal with it. But they would be entitled to gaming, no question about it.
Yeah, Paul, what's that? I, I, I'm struggling, you know, you know, stop struggling with this, but there's a history lesson here is that.
is that, I don't know the correct wording, but originally, when this gaming came down, it was to benefit the restaurants, bars, and pubs that were potentially suffering. And...
And were existing.
And were existing, yeah, were existing, you know. And I know we have to expand out of that, I understand it when we first started, because, yes, we got more restaurants, we got more establishments coming into town. But what then kind of came in off to the side was these gaming parlors, yeah. I mean, they, they got food up front, they got a nice bar up front, no one touches them. They never serve anything. It just, they, it just, they go into the back and they leave. Now, I'm not saying that a salon's gonna do that, but, you know, I just wanna make sure that that's out of it. And if we do that, then this, this Ricardo's gonna be at, we're gonna be at a big time risk because we're gonna open it up because then they can put them in later. Then we gotta decision make, yank their license next year and, and see if or how they fight us.
Is there some type of agreement that you could tie to a liquor license that we can have an agreement with that?
No, the closest you come is the representation that's made on the application, and you, we call that later a misrepresentation, and you'd have that paid later on when you take, when you don't renew the license.
So, is, from what I'm getting, the gaming is an issue?
Yes.
Everything else, as far as the liquor, coming back with some ideas, having Ricardo get some ideas, with Chief? Everyone agree, in agreeance, that that would be something that they would want to come back without gaming? Or some type of option?
Just adding an expectation and understanding that this is not the culture for gaming. I mean, no, I mean, I just can't see that really being a substantial issue.
Do any of the ones in Algonquin that have start, is there only one you said?
I do not know how many licenses they've issued since they passed the ordinance and included that license. I can, I'll do a little research with that. I might suggest, I don't, there's not a whole lot out there on research for us to come back with any, this is...
My question was gonna be, do any of them have gaming?
So, again, I do not believe they do, but this license just got passed a month ago, so they don't have time to get gaming.
I mean, we have to get into a better, bigger suburb, you know, go to neighborhood, shop, or see...
At the end of the day, it's gonna come back to you, our ordinance does allow, it clearly states that the renewal privilege on a license here and provided for shall not be construed as a vested right, which shall in any case prevent the mayor or city council from decreasing the number of licenses to be issued in jurisdiction, so, but it's gonna get challenged. If somebody gets a liquor license under this...
Well, they hold money and do it.
And they add a gaming machines, they tell you no, they add it, and then come April 30th, you guys say, no, Dave's gonna have to tell us, what's our chances we're gonna win that in litigation? That's gonna be one question that probably should be asked upfront, just so we are fully well aware of what we're getting into. The other thing that we can put some effort into, and Dave can work with me, is maybe further defining what type of a personal care establishment you would be interested in providing this to. You can always amend it later, but we could restrict it a little bit more than Algonquin did. Maybe it needs to be so many square feet, maybe it needs to be in business in the city of McHenry for X amount of years, so that way, we're not, you know, Sports Clips isn't gonna come over and say, hey, we wanna start serving wine, and then, you know, Great Clips is gonna come over and say, hey, we wanna start serving wine. So, you have some built-in resistors rather than just saying, we're only gonna approve two of these, we're not gonna approve two more. You might not get more than a couple then that way because you're putting some restrictions on that.
That's a good idea, you should bill us for that, yeah. That was a good idea.
That's a really good idea, and to add to that, like, you had mentioned earlier that if you get your hair colored or whatever, I mean, maybe a variety of services, like massage and, you know, I mean, like, they have to be separate services.
I don't know. The idea is that there's, you're supposed to be there for a set amount of time. From the law enforcement standpoint, we wanna know that if you're gonna, if you're gonna be somewhere that's not a traditional restaurant where there's a lot better experience and regulation, and let's be real, even with BAC training, a bartender or a full-time server at a restaurant or bar is gonna be better equipped to serve somebody, we hope, and recognize that somebody may or may not be overserved and so on and so forth. So, there's restrictions placed in this type of license, that's why there's only two four-ounce drinks, and you're hopefully, that they're gonna spend an hour or two or more there getting those services because their body can absorb and metabolize, you know, roughly a drink an hour. So, they're, we're not sending them on their way maybe under the influence. That's what we wanna avoid.
Can we set time limits for the amount of time they would be?
I think that's what Algonquin's intention was by saying you had to buy a minimum of four of these things. And I, again, I'm not an expert in this, but I don't know how long a manicure takes or an aromatherapy or a facial or an exfoliation, but I have to imagine they're all thirty minutes or more. And when you have to do a minimum of four of them to be eligible to get offered this drink, you don't have to take it. You're already building the time.
We have a direction, I will bring it back to you with more information.
You?
You killed me. All right, good. Got it. Next item on the agenda is executive sessions.
Yeah, we're not gonna do that tonight because of the hour, but just know that we're having some issues at the wastewater treatment plant. We're at the tail end of the construction and the approvals and so forth, and we need to discuss that with the city council, so we'll do that on the eve of July 4th.
3rd.
June 3rd.
June 3rd. Next item on the agenda is staff reports, anything?
All I have is lookout for an email from me probably tomorrow. In fact, I already have it written, but I didn't wanna send it today and confuse it with other correspondence or anything else, just about utilizing, we're switching from Dropbox, which we've used since we got our iPads however many years ago, to a program called SharePoint that's web-based, it's an intranet, so we host it, we control it. It's much more secure and more organized than Dropbox, easier to use than Dropbox. And so, I will be sending you an email with a link in that email and some explanation of what I just said to you, at least in a written format. And then, when we send the next council packet out, June 3rd, we'll also put in that notification email the link again to it, remind you not to go to Dropbox, but to use SharePoint to go get your council packet. And actually, you'll be able to save it as a favorite in your web browser and just go right to that site. It's a city, it's a council, you know, tab you'll be able to access. So, just know that, that that's, that change is coming up, and I think you'll find it much more useful to use than Dropbox. Thank you.
That's it, Chief?
I just wanted to let council know that Sergeant Kevin Cox, after 25 years of service, has announced his retirement effective June 25th. So, we will put out a short little cake and coffee reception for him shortly, and council is welcome to attend that. And that will leave a vacancy in our sergeant pool, so we will be promoting Brian Elto, Detective Brian Elto, the sergeant, he's the next on our list, and he will be before you guys in front of city council for his promotion tentatively on June 17th.
Perfect. That's it, okay. Mayor, city council comments, June 3rd, we'll be bringing committees to you. So, that'll be on the agenda, just so you know. Other than that, I don't have anything, city council comments?
Just real quick, we have received some interest for the city clerk position.
Yep.
You may have seen that was posted a week or so ago through the Facebook page. We had quite a bit of interest right off the bat. Some individuals have submitted further requests, letters of interest, cover letters, if you wanna call them that, resumes or just emails with information in it. So, the mayor and I will be setting up a couple interviews for at least four people, maybe five, next week. And hopefully, be able to bring a recommendation before council so we can get the position per council direction filled sooner, sooner than later.
Thank you, Derek. City council comments? Alderman Miller?
Yeah. As everybody's already known, I've talked to our state senator, and he has not received anything as far as any capital approval projects that possibly that we'd be needing funding for. He's coming here and...
We'll send him more CIP.
Sitting there waiting to hear from us, to go do battle for us, so there's something that we need to try to obtain some financing for, now's the time to get all the...
He told you he has funds?
He said he would be fighting to get...
I'll be bringing, um... There was a request on Algonquin, McHenry County Council, governments, a couple months ago, we put in the mill stream limitation project and gave that to their liaison.
Thank you.
Through the McHenry County Council.
Those, yeah, there was a request, I believe, for a similar purpose that we responded to a couple months ago.
Will you sit down with Walcox? Will you sit down with Walcox? Any other council comments? Seen it?
Looking for a motion to adjourn. You have a comment?
And second, Alderman Miller. Please call it off.
Alderman Sankey?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Schaper?
Yes.
Alderman Danny?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.